Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, February 13th Board of Selectment meeting. Selectman Andy Friedman is not with us tonight, but rest assured, the four of us will be able to handle this about everything else. Our standing agenda is Selectmen Liaisons reports and comments. I'll open the floor for public comment, if any. If you choose to say something, please stand, tell us your name and your street address. We'll hear briefly from our town manager regarding an update over the last two weeks. We have a lengthy set of discussions tonight, and we're going to go, I think, fairly late into the evening. We're going to approve a Massachusetts School Building Authority statement of interest covering a boiler at RMHS that's nearing useful life. We're going to discuss and propose the adoption of a housing production plan. We're going to have a brief discussion about new 40R projects, 40R being the Smart Growth District that was voted recently in-town meeting, specifically the Permits Revolving Fund. We have two changes of management or interest, one for Liquor Junction and one for Anthony's Coal Fire Pizza. These are both fairly common. When ownership changes or management changes, there's a requirement because of the liquor license to formally change the named individuals, the responsible individuals. We'll have a discussion of safety. We'll preview the warrant for the April town meeting. There is a plan to discuss selectmen's goals, and we'll talk about that at about 9:00. There's also a proposal to discuss Board of Selectment policies, Article One, general operating procedures. We're short a person tonight, and I'll talk about that later, whether that makes sense or not. And finally, we'll close off the evening discussing Redding Municipal Light Payments to the Town and a series of recent discussions on the matter of those payments and whether options exist regarding RMLD. We have four sets of minutes to approve tonight, so that's a full agenda. Probably it's going to take us to about 11:00. With that in mind, I'll turn to my left for Liaison Report. Barry?
Just briefly, Mr. Chair, I believe all of us last night attended the Yes for Redding rally held at the Congregational Church. A lot of energy, passion, excitement, a lot of neighbors coming to learn about it, what they can do to help. It was a real good showing. Organizers are really on top of things, and it was just a joy to kind of watch people come together and figure out ways to move this town forward. So glad to be a part of it and to work on that more forward.
Thank you. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board of Health will be meeting next Tuesday, the 20th. One of the items on the agenda is they're staying on top of the demolition of the old Doucette Storage Building in preparation for the building of Redding Village, the 40B project by the depot. And they're getting involved in regulating any potential rodent control or other issues surrounding that demolition.
Okay.
Also, I had a meeting at 5:30 with Bob with the payment to the Town of Redding Subcommittee, two members of the RMLD, two members of the CAB, which advises the RMLD Board. I will say, at this point, there was a frank exchange of views, which was very useful. We were trying to move things off the dime and toward a negotiated resolution before town meeting. We will have a more complete discussion on that later tonight.
Okay. Thank you. John?
Actually, I don't have anything specific. Recreations meeting next door, and I know they've got a very full agenda, which I will report on afterwards. Unfortunately, I can never get to their meetings because they're right on top of this.
Sure.
And in the interest of time, I think everything else can wait till the next time.
And I have no comments. As Barry said, we all attended last night, very well-attended activity for Yes for Redding, so lots of work ahead. With that, I'll open up for public comment. If somebody would, if you'd like to speak, just stand up, raise your hand, tell us what's on your mind. You can ask a question, you can vent an opinion, whatever you'd like. Yes, Matt?
I am Oriano, 94 Euston Street.
And I'm Mike Floyd from 190 Green Street.
So we, I wrote to the board, to the town manager, town staff regarding some concerns we have about safe harbor interpretation that was presented previously. So Mike did lots of research, got opinions from state agencies, he communicated it to the town two weeks ago, so we would like to know.
Bob?
You folks went to the 5:30 meeting. I wasn't able to go there.
Okay.
I think Ray just expressed an opinion before the meeting.
Yeah, he did. I think, as I would cast it, the view is that there is a view from the state that we've received that would, if read as we read it, would allow safe harbor to be invoked, but to also allow the parties to continue to work. It's in effect, an agreement to hold stasis in place, but allow the two parties to continue to work. So safe harbor would be invoked, as it would be in any case, and then through some process, I'm not entirely clear, that the developer, the town, and presumably the interested parties would have a chance to continue the conversation to some successful outcome. That's the feedback we've got so far, and I heard about that tonight for about a half an hour ago.
One thing I'll add that I know, and I am getting the second-hand, so I apologize for that. I don't usually give second-hand info, but I've heard that the developer, through his attorney, has agreed to sign a legal document that will allow the town to continue the negotiations and still have the power of the safe harbor. So because the legal wording from the state is quite often somewhat confusing, it could be interpreted different ways by different attorneys. In recognition of that fact, the developer is, I think, taking a very good positive step of letting the town continue the safe harbor protection well beyond the first 15 days, if it so chooses.
So an important aspect of this is the ZBA actually notifying the developer within the first 15 days of opening the project?
Exactly.
That we have safe harbor, that we're choosing to invoke it?
Exactly.
But deserve the right to invoke it.
Yes.
Well, actually, it would be invoked in all cases.
Conversations would still happen.
Sure.
Yeah, it does seem that you would invoke it, and that's something we would do.
But not deny the project.
No.
That allows it.
Correct.
Would it allow?
So we don't deny the project.
Yeah, it allows the...
We've understood that this is not the Board of Selectmen's decision.
Yeah, yeah.
We just want to make sure that the right approach is going in, because it's a very limited timeframe that the town has to make the right decision.
The meeting we just got out of conveyed the 15-day window, the process by which, if we understand it correctly, it would proceed, and I think that's at the present time.
We would appreciate it if you keep people informed, because we would like to have some clarity.
Absolutely. This is fresh information, and as Bob says, the language from the state is not entirely clear. It's written in lawyer speak, not in people speak.
So has the town considered getting a 40B advisor? It's a pretty common practice in other towns. It's actually, you know, a bunch of towns go about it different ways, but Mass Housing Partnership actually provides a free 40B, let me give you the right, 40B technical assistance program.
Okay.
The town can sign up for it. There's a list of consultants that they pick from based on who has time, and they'll assign a consultant to the town, and they'll, this is somebody that works with 40B projects every day and knows the projects, had experience doing it and gone on.
I will speak candidly, that's the process we started at the Train Depot, and the person the state picked was completely unsatisfactory, so we used our own town council and had a much better result. Town Council is fully engaged in this process. If he needs additional resources, we'll certainly acquire them.
And as if memory serves me, he has a staff attorney that is...
An expert on...
It is an expert on 40B. I mean, when we used that facility the last time, honestly, it was, it was almost like he was representing the other side, is the way that, is the way we, our takeaway was. And so with that in mind, we brought our own expert in through, you know, through the town council, and fortunately, because he does have somebody on staff, we, and we'll certainly, you know, bring, you know, this, this is a really new thing for our town, having the Safe Harbor Avenue, I think, and...
Yeah, it's actually new in the state.
Or we can bring someone from outside that has experience with this, even if we only take their, you know, their advice at capital and make our own decisions, it still has someone that has experience doing this every day, telling you where they've seen, what they've seen other towns do, what they've seen other projects.
The firm that represents us does this with other towns as well, so...
I think the fear is the state, the motivator of the consultant may not be aligned with the motivations of the town or the motivations of the neighborhood, because it's not paid for, so their economic interests are being paid by somebody else, so they follow, they follow that motivation.
That's a good point.
But the attorneys...
The 40B is just an advisor. The town still has the right to make their own decisions.
Right.
So I think that's worth it to keep in mind is...
I don't think we're rejecting it.
We're not beholden to anything that person says.
Right.
We can bring someone in and decide that they're not, they're not doing us justice, and we want to go our own route, continue to go our own route.
I don't think we're rejecting it.
It is what we did the last time.
It is, it is, I think, especially considering there's already some confusion associated with the law, it seems to make sense to bring someone in that may help decipher this.
Bob?
The problem with the confusion is our town council asked a very clear, I'll send you the email, black-and-white question of the state. They answered it by running around the Mulberry Bush. That is what we deal with, so when you say it's not clear, I agree with you, it's not clear. We're asking clear questions and not getting frank answers. Candidly, that's the answer. So that's why we believe using our own resources, using our own money, and hiring our advocate for our best interests is the best way to serve this process. I think pretty much everyone in the room has the same objectives on this, which is, you know, do things the best for the whole community. The problem is the process is difficult, and that's not the rules that any of us set.
I know this sounds perhaps like a, we should know more about this. I think we don't go through 40Bs terribly often, and we don't go through ones in Safe Harbor ever, to my knowledge. Our motivation, my personal motivation, is to get a project that's good for the neighborhood and good for the town. They have my commitment to make that happen. We'll find every way to be clear and not just transparent with data, but actually tell you, to the best of our knowledge, what's going on.
And we'll use all the resources that we have to get that done.
And I'll forward you the email we got today from the state, and you can make your own conclusion.
That would be appreciated, yeah, and, you know, anything we can do that, as a neighborhood have a seat at table to help that discussion, help that along would be...
I understand.
Someone like to, you ask the town staff about the discussions with ZBA members, so the town is issued for this development?
I guess there was a meeting at 5:00 earlier tonight with some, the chair and vice-chair.
So I'm just, I mean, the chair isn't here accusing himself from...
I guess it was the vice-chair. I didn't go.
John?
I'm sure Dave was not there.
Yeah, the chair has recused himself completely from this project.
So I was wondering if the town is open to hearing input from the residents while making recommendations to the ZBA, because we feel we can make a contribution and give them the safe harbor.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
And you have that right at the hearing as well.
I was just going to say...
I think that the town making recommendations without you being in, it's not optimal. It's not an optimal going as such.
We agree, we agree. You have a...
That's not how we operate.
That's not how we operate.
No.
So we know that there is an upcoming meeting of the development review team, so we want to request to have representatives present.
I'm not aware of that meeting, but I'm assuming there is one, and no, that's not a public meeting. The developer will not come if public is there, quite can't.
The earliest...
That's our experience.
Yeah, the earliest opportunity we could do it is on the, meeting on March 7th for the hearing itself.
Is there a DRT before ZBA begins?
This time.
Okay.
It's a staff...
What is the mechanism? Are you, I would think you would be interested to hear through the ZBA deposition.
And the proper avenue is through the ZBA hearing process. That's absolutely where you have the loudest voice, by far.
I understand that, but if the town staff is making recommendations, don't you want to kind of hear from them?
I guess we're not making the same kind of recommendations you might imagine. Police and fire are there for public safety reasons. Can a fire truck make this turning rate? Things like that, it's very technical. It's...
Are members from the CPDC that were, not commissioners, but representatives, so...
No, it's all staff.
Not involved.
So I understand staff, but staff that work with the CPDC or, who else is, I guess you say police and fire, but who else is involved?
Police, fire, engineering, planning staff, Board of Health.
So planning is involved in this?
Sure.
I mean, that's an important aspect that the town, that the public should be engaged in, and that...
But again, I emphasize, from past experience, these are private meetings where there's a very frank discussion between the staff and the developer, extremely frank. Those discussions would not happen in public.
So the developer is present?
The developer and his attorney, I assume, are the key participants.
It seems to be a balance, to me, that the factors, what are factors that is have no safety?
This is the absolute public, the public meeting, shaping the project before it goes to a public meeting.
You're right, we're not shaping the project. The project begins on when ZBA opens the hearing. We are giving technical advice to the developer, not, not at all the same kind of things that you're going to talk.
Bob, what are examples of that device? If you said turning radius...
Yeah, I think that would be helpful to see.
You know, width of the road, you know, for a subdivision, for instance, width of the road, it has to be this wide in order for a fire truck to be able to get down, hit a turning radius, and come out.
Can the ladder reach the top of the building?
Yeah, so it's things like that.
It's not the size and scope and massing and setback.
Not the appearance of the project.
Comes later.
It's very technical things.
Just want to add a point about peer review.
Do you discuss traffic then during this meeting?
I have...
My name is Diane, I live at 3 Smith Avenue.
Hi, Diane.
Hi.
What's the last name, Diane?
Lovinj.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I have no idea of track, this traffic is covered itself at the DRT. I would imagine it's a little early. We only have the traffic study provided by the developer, and I would imagine that would take, we'd have to evaluate to see if we agree that the sample points were set right, if the time of day was set right. You know, Walkersburg Drive is a pretty busy place with shopping on the weekend, not so busy necessarily on working days, so, but I don't know technically if traffic is part of the DRT.
It's interesting to hear this, sitting here and hearing both sides, because it doesn't feel very transparent, and I understand this is a procedure that you've always used, but this is actually a case where it's not just residents of the size of the building and the aesthetics, we actually have some technical issues, and we have people in our neighborhood who have background in engineering and, you know, planning, so I feel like architecture, construction, it seems like a situation where it might be who, everyone, for us to be involved earlier on, I know you keep saying about the ZBA meeting, that seems pretty late in the game.
It's actually, that's the beginning of the game.
It's actually the start of the game.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, these hearings will go on for hours and hours, and all input
will be sought. There's nobody keeping you away from the table, and the decision is going to be made up front, out in, out in the open, so...
Can you keep the minutes, please, if you have discussions with the...
Of the DRT meetings? Absolutely.
Those are public?
Those become public.
We've requested those in the past, and we were told that meetings aren't kept, and they are public.
You always keep minutes, right?
Yeah.
And then they're sent to CPDC, so they become public, so I don't know why you've got that impression.
So can we access like the next, within the next two days, whatever, you know, like...
I don't know what the approval process is, so...
Next, you might just argue, it's a lot of projects, it's not the only project that we're doing in the town.
But if they...
Next week, yes. Right, because the timing is critical. I don't mean to, you know, I understand that you have a lot of work, but I'm just saying, timing here is critical.
I should trust you.
Because if we don't, you know, we're going to the ZBA meeting without full knowledge.
So it sounds like minutes are public. It sounds like you haven't gotten minutes from past meetings. Are there dates you're particularly looking for that you know?
Two meetings in the past, we have the dates that we would like to see.
Do you know the dates?
Yes, we can communicate.
What are, what are the, do you know them right now?
The last year, I don't, I can confirm, it's on the two tomorrow.
If you would do that, we'll try to chase down the minutes for you.
It's all on the website. It's all on the website.
Jean Delios, Assistant Town Manager. The website has a lot of information.
Should you navigate there, Bob?
It's there on this project, including the RRT.
Okay. We're ready to...
I think we're looking for it right now.
The departments, I'm sorry. While you're looking, I want to talk about another part of the process that will happen at ZBA. After a plan is presented, there will be a number of waivers generally sought by the developer from setbacks, from other aspects. The town can hire experts to evaluate every one of those waiver requests, and that gets built back to the developer, so that, that's an important part of the review process.
So traffic, for example, an independent traffic study.
We could challenge a traffic study, for instance.
Do you want to make positive contributions?
Sure, I understand.
Have expertise in the...
And you'll have that opportunity.
Right.
Copiously.
Let's let her finish.
What do you like to request, I don't know if you're interested in that, but to come up with an opportunity to present to the board, and we would like to give you our perspective, not a negative perspective, stop the development. We have some thoughts and suggestions, which I need, should be out there, and we're looking for a public forum, which we heard, and we found we're very successful in our attempts to talk to the town so far.
You don't think the ZBA hearing is the right place to do that?
I think there's concern that that's too late, or that decisions are getting made before...
I think that already decisions are being made, that private conversations, informal discussions, we feel there's lack of transparency in the way the process is currently being handled.
Just for my vantage point, I have no problem at all with you being involved, as long as it's not detrimental to the developer process, but anything else is fair game. Bob has on the screen, is this from July of '17? Is that one of the dates you were looking for? It's under a different department.
Well, it's under the ZBA.
It's on the Eaton Lake 240, 40B webpage.
And is there more than one there?
You go right here, under ZBA.
Under minutes?
There's a whole bunch of, you know, information, I'll just say.
Have you seen that one before?
Yes, yes, good, thank you.
So, sorry, Bob, where was that in the links there?
Go back and navigate to that thing you just opened.
Yeah, I got to find, it's one of those hidden little under...
Jean to the rescue, here we go.
No.
Nope.
Just kidding.
Comment letter. Well, we know the comment letter, but this is not minutes from your...
Well, the minutes are at the end of the comment letter.
It's referenced in the letter, and then it's a clear attachment.
Was there more than one date, you said?
There were two days.
Okay.
I can think of two.
Yeah. You know, have a look and see if, if the comments and the things discussed, I don't know, are different from what I've told you and what you've expected, I suppose.
Well, I think as you get to planning and traffic, it gives suggestions of what the traffic study should include.
Well, there's traffic right there, and that's one reference.
Not much there, obviously, it's high.
I see your point that this would be interesting to the neighborhood. It does...
I completely understand the fire and the police, and there's very specific code aspects that the fire and the police are looking to, but it seems like the meeting goes beyond that.
Well, there's a wide scope, as I mentioned, all the, you know, parties that were present, including, I didn't mention the last one. Yeah, and in this specific one, there is conservation land nearby. So again, you know, reasonably short, shortly after these meetings held, you know, these minutes do get published.
So we feel, if you have a understanding of the processes, processes between the developer and the town, and we can express our comments in the public discussion, but we're not really a party of this proceeding, so the town should represent our viewpoint, and we would like to communicate to the town, and we haven't found the right avenue at the moment.
Do you have something written that you could give to us?
We would like to do a presentation, we have minutes.
Bob?
I think maybe the issue here is one of standing the process, for better or worse. In my mind, as a non-expert, the process begins when the ZBA opens the hearing. Whatever discussion has gone in, and we sometimes spend a year having discussions on issues, we are trying to prepare the developer for the public discussion and what the town will be concerned about from our past experience. Using the Train Depot project as an example, once the hearing began, the project changed basically based on public input. So we're just getting the developer ready for the first meeting, if you will, trying to prepare them and say, do a traffic study, these are the things we should be concerned about when we're making decisions. We're just giving them advice on how to present a project in Redding. And my impression is the project, that's just prep work. No decisions are made, you know, the developer decides how to present the project, but the decisions are made through the ZBA process in a 40B, very much so through CPDC and other projects.
So the design guide sounds like working assumptions that the, working assumptions that the town puts upon the project, but not the design elements themselves. It's traffic study, it's water, it's sewer, it's egress, ingress, but they're really just the corners of the map, they're not what the, what the design will actually contain, they're, the areas of concern.
Yeah, and depending on the developer, I will say, this developer's been fairly open, looking for advice. Other developers aren't interested in this advice. The advice can be in range, honestly. You know, they want to get more familiar with the neighborhood, so we had to tell them about the park that's just down the street, said, you know, you've got a park not far away, you should consider this. You know, we're not, again, not making decisions, we're just giving them information on the community and the location in the community, so when they start the process, they will be able to have a good conversation with you.
So you feel you have sufficient information about the condition of the community for this stuff?
That's not what I said. I said, the process begins the first night of the ZBA, that's when the community needs to say whatever it needs to say.
So if you wanted to make a 10-minute presentation on the first night, I don't, sorry? If you did, I wouldn't see necessarily any problem with it, would fit it into the discussion. I'm sure the developer...
Actually, that's how, that's how it starts, it opens.
Right. I don't see there's a problem with that at all. John?
I think that, I mean, I've been to a couple of these.
Right.
And the way it starts is the developer rolls, and I think what these citizens are asking, they've actually, it sounds like they've, they've assembled themselves and put a lot of energy into how this is going to affect their neighborhood, and it sounds like they're actually prepared to make a presentation in a similar way that a developer would, understanding that, you know, the person, the developer owns the property, the developer, you know, has certain rights and abilities to develop it, we have certain obligations, and, I mean, I haven't heard anything that, you know, disquiets that. So it sounds like, you know, they would like agenda time, and it sounds like you, the ZBA might be a place to do that, because they're going to hear from the developer. I know it's not something we've heard in the past, but we haven't heard neighborhoods organized in this way around the impact of their neighborhood.
This is the first time we've had a project under Safe Harbor. It's the largest single project, I think, I've seen in a compact neighborhood, something like Pulte Homes in South Maine is adjacent to the highway, it's already open, Lane Johnson Woods was a former farm, but this is kind of plopped in the middle of a dense neighborhood with a, as far as I can tell, so I'm exactly where you are, John. I'm fine with if you guys want it, we'll fit it in somewhere during the evening. I think the developer wants to start to kind of describe a baseline thought.
Yeah, it's actually, I mean, the zoning board would have...
I want to make sure you understand, you have not missed any opportunity to present your side at all.
We just want to make sure that we'll have our seat at the table.
The ZBA should absolutely, that's the reason they're having a public hearing.
We deserve a seat at the table, it's your home. We can make a recommendation to the ZBA.
Bob, I don't think we disagree with you, and we understand that once the project opens, we have the opportunity, but we want to make sure we do have to see at the table that there's time for us to provide our comment, because we have been doing that in detail. And then we also want to make sure as decisions get made, that, safe harbor, and what the, what the process is behind that, that that's understood, because those are decisions that have to be made early, those are decisions that you need a full understanding of, and that's, that's part of why we're here tonight, rather than waiting for a ZBA meeting, is that...
Okay. Okay. Who's the point of contact for the group, or what email address?
Oriano and myself.
Okay. So we'll send you a copy, is it okay to send a copy of that state opinion?
Oh yeah, we just got it today.
Okay, so we'll send you a copy of that language, you can tell us what you think it says. We'll take it from there.
So it sounds like what you're really going to be doing at the ZBAA is, it's a public hearing, so they're going to look for public comment. I would suggest to you that as a courtesy to them, that you let them know you actually have an assembly, you have an assembly of neighbors who have put the time into a presentation that your public comment would be 10 minutes, 12 minutes, somewhere. I think that that's just a courtesy to them, and I would say to you, Mr. Chairman, that if you guys would like to get some, get on one of our agendas...
Oh, absolutely.
I think you should do that. And I'm guessing that would be...
Our next meeting.
Yeah.
Although it would just be with us, it wouldn't be the developer, just because...
We would like you, as our elected officials, to be on the same page.
Absolutely.
We would like to tell you what we think, what we've researched, we've put lots of time and effort, and we believe we can bring something to the table. We're not just trying to stop it, we're trying to make it better, we're trying to make it appropriate.
And, John, anything that we do care, we would provide ahead of time, so that the developer has a chance to look at it, because just like we want a chance to look at the project before it opens on March 7, you know, I'm sure they want to understand more.
I don't hear a battle here, I hear process.
Yeah.
And I think that's highly appropriate.
That this board wants to see the best project there.
We all agree with you. We think this project can be an asset, it doesn't need to be...
That's really nice to hear, that I would endorse if you want to present to us, that that's helpful, you don't have to, you can do it just if this...
We want to kind of see the...
Get a reaction.
...lay out our perspective and what we see as priorities, and just create some context, because you guys heard from the developer, and I think there's needs for some balance in this project.
Understand.
And we want to kind of ensure that we're well informed, but maybe you don't understand what you need.
We do.
Okay.
Could we put them on our next agenda, Bob? Is there time?
I'll check, I'll have to look.
Well, how much time would you think you need? 20 minutes?
Ten, ten twenty.
Why don't we call it 20 minutes, if you, we may have questions that take you...
They'll comment on for us as well.
We don't get anything done.
Right, and it would be on agenda, I'm not a...
Half an hour.
Raise your hand.
This is a dedicated portion that...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm just looking for the agenda for next week, here's...
Oh, here it is.
I'm closing the warrant.
Girl scouts are first, they're most important.
Yep.
You wouldn't want to go with them.
There's room in there.
Yeah.
I think so.
I think somewhere in this area.
So if we said like 8:00, 8:30 start?
8:30, probably.
Is that okay?
I need to talk to Ray.
We could take our policies to the back end.
Yeah, we might be able to put them ahead of the 8 o'clock, and Ray come a little later, I've time council.
I mean, if you take a look... In the classification, it's only 10 minutes, right?
Most of that is stuff that we, is housekeeping stuff for us, or most of it is.
So we'll get back to...
So we could certainly plug you in earlier and...
Before sharing on the table.
We'll get you a specific time, probably by email, but something in order.
Maybe bring up a presentation?
Yeah, you bring it on a memory stick.
If you want, you can bring it or send it to me.
Actually, you know what, just because it's helpful to kind of, I read everything ahead of time, so if it's possible to get to Bob, so that it could be included in our packets. Before, yeah.
Okay, please.
Well, whenever you, yeah, look, whatever you can do, whenever you can. I mean, we see freezing stations here all the time, that are first time we see them, and they're not in the packet.
Yeah, you don't have to...
It happens all the time, and that's, if you have to put them under that kind of...
That would be helpful.
If something changes, we'll let you know where...
That's fine, you can make game day change.
That'll engage questions, and I think it's a more fruitful discussion.
An outline is fine. Your PowerPoint, I personally don't, I mean, we see PowerPoints all the time that are not part of our package, but we have a little bit of an outline, knowing what we're going to be hearing about, and so that seems reasonable.
We're going to have questions too, so I think if you've got 10 minutes of material, I'd allocate 30 minutes overall, and if you're short, we'll just accelerate the rest of the evening. So we'll get back to you with a date and a time.
Well, I think we'd do a 27?
I need to talk to Ray.
Yeah, it's somewhere in that range, but we'll know that...
It'll either be the 27th or the meeting thereafter, but we'll work on it being the 27th.
Okay. Actually, the meeting thereafter is, I think, is that the night of the hearing? No, no, I'm sorry. It's the 13th.
Probably better, March 7. This is a good night.
When's the ZBAA hearing start?
The 7th? Yeah, so we'd have to do it on the 27th.
Okay, that's perfect.
Thank you so much for stopping by. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Yes?
My name is Kevin Signetti, I'm a resident, 45-year resident of Smith Avenue, 13 Smith Avenue. I'm now semi-retired, so I can now spend some time in front of you guys discussing various necessary things. But I probably should have gone first rather than second, because I know what Safe Harbor is, I know how it applies to retirement plans, however, I don't know how it applies to this project. So if you could, give me about a crazy version of Safe Harbor.
Gene?
Sure.
Grab a mic.
So, the Safe Harbor is a provision of state law. Everything that we're talking about here has to do with state law, nothing to do with what the town's zoning is or the town's regulations are in any way. These are all state regulations. So essentially, in these state regulations, and it's on the state website, mass.gov, and you can look under 40B regulations, and there's a provision that if a city or town has a certified housing production plan, we're going to be talking about the update to the housing production plan tonight, then...
I want to stop you there for a second.
Yes.
What are you referring to by certified housing production plan?
A plan that the state has sanctioned, the town has put a plan together that says, we understand that there's a state law that says we have to get 10% of all of our housing units as affordable.
Okay, that's what I would like you to, you know...
Okay.
Illustrate.
So, that's what the state law says. You have to have 10%, minimum, affordable housing in your community.
And does that 10% have to be in one area of the town?
No.
No, it's...
But it has to be deed restricted.
I understand.
I used to work for the city of Peavy, we had 700 mobile homes, and we got credit for none of those, even though they were affordable housing.
Sure.
It did not qualify.
Okay.
So deed restricted units.
So are you saying the Safe Harbor provision strictly deals with the 10% of low-income housing?
This all, this whole topic has to do with how we...
It's low and moderate income, it's not all low income.
How do we meet the state regulations around this requirement for 10% affordable housing?
Let me stop you there for a minute. Because I've been here for 45 years, I've seen an incinerator that was built and cost almost $10 million, never used. I've seen the dump converted to, and we'd never realized it was going to start 60 feet above street level. We didn't realize that the lighting was going to be what it was by the developer. We've seen Pearl Street closed down because of the fact that it was unsafe for kids, but now it's assisted living. So I think that there are a number of us who have been around for quite some time who are very concerned with what's going on, especially with this potential project. And I know the zombies on it, I'm familiar with them, and I know the trucking and so forth and so on, so I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Just continue.
So part one of Safe Harbor is you have to have a certified housing production plan, which we have.
Sure.
And we're updating tonight, so that we'll have one for the future. Part two is...
That certified production plan have to do with the schools as well, and the population of kids in the schools, as we have seen, and I think it's not very expandable in the schools.
Not really. The housing production plan is exactly what it says. How are you going to get to 10%? Show me your production plan.
Is there any waiver that can be given on that for some period of time?
That's what the Safe Harbor is.
So let me, if I can just...
What I'm saying is, if we have to hit 10%, by what time?
So this is, if you can just let me walk you through this. So part one is having this certified plan that says, this is how we're going to get there. Part two is a provision that says, if you produce half of 1% or 1% in a calendar year, then you could qualify for either a one-year or a two-year Safe Harbor. So in 2017, we produced enough to qualify for, and we had a one-year Safe Harbor, we got an increase to a two-year Safe Harbor because of the units that we produced and how it matched with that 1%.
And now what does that mean, Gene, that we have it? What benefit does that add in your to the town?
So, under a Safe Harbor, you're allowed to, the zoning board can invoke this Safe Harbor and say, we have, you know, we have the Safe Harbor, this now allows us to go forward with this comprehensive permit application, but with the idea that at some point, if the negotiations and the project does not proceed, that it can be denied. Because the reason this whole process is so important is, a comprehensive permit is not a local provision, it's a provision under the state.
And that's what 40B is.
It's all under the state.
The developer can come in and do pretty much what they want.
Right. So, we can't, the zoning board could open up, let's say we didn't have a Safe Harbor, the zoning board could open up the public hearing and say, "We don't like the project, we're going to deny it." Well, all the developer has to do is appeal it to the state, and 99% of the time, if you don't have a Safe Harbor, they're going to say, "We're denied, you don't have grounds, you're not at 10%. This is why we have this provision. This permit is for communities who aren't at 10%." Except, if you have a Safe Harbor, you have another, a further ability under the statute to say no.
Okay, and you'd have to meet the 10% of what period of time though?
Well, it's a whole process of how the state counts the units, and you have to attempt the losses, you have to be at 10%.
Forever.
If you're not there, you're subject to these comprehensive permit applications.
Well, we aren't at 10% now.
We're not at 10%. We generated enough to have a Safe Harbor.
Right.
But we're not at 10%.
It showed a good faith effort.
Well, what percent are we now?
9.35.
9.35. So in the event that this project goes through, then it would bring up to 10%?
Right, but then you have to do the census again.
I understand that.
The challenge with this way of this, that state calculates, is they only add projects to the numerator, not the denominator.
Right.
So every 10 years, as the US Census is updated, the denominator...
But if the census is stable, and we're at 10%, the state could then demand that we go at 15%?
No, no.
It'll just be 10% of now what your housing units are, so if you built 500 units, that gets added to your denominator, so now you have to create...
Did we look at that at all when we did the project on West Street, in terms of the units that are there? Did we look at that when we did the project on top of Route 28?
All of that is calculated as part of the SH. It is, it's already baked in. What she's saying is, once you're at 10, you can say no without consequence. You have meat, however, what 10 means gets reset every 10 years.
Right.
Because the number of houses in the pool has grown over the 10-year span.
But if we continue to develop a number of complexes in the town redic, then we will then need more low and middle income.
You're always going to be chasing it, because you have to be at 10%. So if you're adding to your housing stuff...
I understand what you're saying, but that's what...
So yes, you're right, you're gonna, we're gonna have to keep doing this, but if we're at the 10%, we're still going to have to create affordable housing, but if a developer comes in and wants to do the next Eaton Lakeview, I want to put 120 units in there, we have our 10% in a Safe Harbor, we can say, "No."
Okay. At this particular point, under which circumstances could we have that project not go through?
None.
I don't see how that's possible.
We could delay it.
You could delay it.
We can delay it.
Then we have less leverage.
Why are we doing this then?
The concept is, because the developer is motivated to complete, they own the asset, times change, environments change, economies change, they want to get something done and get out. So the purpose of the Safe Harbor in this setting is to achieve a better project and encourage the developer to make perhaps some concessions in return for allowing the project to occur sooner.
Time is money for the developer.
Right.
Otherwise, he just can wait till the Safe Harbor runs out, and then he can build whatever he wants, and, you know, we could raise our hand and say, "Well, we think you should do this," and he'll say, "Well, I take it under advisement, but no." Because he, his whole, the comprehensive permit just pretty much takes everything out of the town's hands. We have the ability to shape the project better if we work with the developer than we do if we don't, and, you know...
You have a choice, you could do nothing for two years, or one year now, because one year's consumed one year ahead, as we sit here today. And then at the end of that period, you're no better off than if you had nothing to start with, you're basically, it's timeout, game over. The thought is to try to get a better project for both the neighborhood and the town by providing incentives for the developer to make some concessions in return for a faster start date, because he's carrying the property, he's got all, he's got taxes he's paying, he wants to recover that cash and sell it off, and the economy can be very different in a year and a half or 18 months, so what looks great today doesn't look so good in a year and a half from now. So he's as interested in getting out as quickly as he can too. So it's a win-win if you play it well.
We own, we own, we own an option right now, and an option over time will disappear. And so that option we have is valuable.
But it's a very cheap option at this point.
Yeah, well, it was...
So worth very much.
I don't know about that.
Well, we disagree with that.
That's all we have.
And one of the things, as just a point of reference, you mentioned a family name here, who are not the developers of that project, just so you're clear.
They're the owners of the land.
No.
Not anymore.
Not anymore.
You know, we just have to be...
Thank you.
Not for two years now.
So we're hoping that this process will go better than the one on Lincoln Street, where we didn't have a Safe Harbor to...
Good, I'm sorry. Bob?
I just want to make sure maybe this is clear, but just for anyone listening, some of the dense housing projects you mentioned also brought along affordable units with them.
Yes, they did.
We have always required a minimum of 10%.
Which then impacted the schools.
It may have impacted the schools.
It then impacted the cost...
If you look at our economic development website, you'll see it didn't have much of an impact on the schools, other than near where I live, the...
For Redding Woods, yeah.
Yeah, the Redding Woods.
Not for Archstone.
But just to be clear, some towns put in dense housing projects and don't require any affordable components, and then they really fall behind the 10%. We've always required at least 10% and normally 20 or 25. So anytime a dense housing project is coming in, for whatever other economic costs or benefits it has, we're not losing to this affordable housing 10% margin, just to be clear.
Thank you.
Yeah. May the public comment.
Mr. Marley?
Yes, Bob. I'm sorry.
Well, thank you. I'm going to cut it short. You said to me, you want us to have a cup of coffee over the removal of the cemetery building from the capital plan?
Yes.
I'd like to ask a question.
Go ahead.
Did you remove it, or did the town manager remove it?
Town meeting removed it.
Anna Sancom recommended it be removed.
Yeah, but according to the charter, you guys go over the capital plan. Did you know it before town meeting, or did you not know it? That's what I'm asking, John.
I did not know that it had been removed before town meeting.
I apologize to you then, hopefully. If the town manager did it without, I'll be here and applaud it.
I'll see you tomorrow, Bill.
And let me know, Bob and I are so good friends, we've always...
Any other public comment? Yes?
Nancy, Dr. Pearl Street. I know later on tonight, you're going to be reviewing your policy on volunteer appointments.
Not tonight.
No.
It's another time.
It's the Article 1 tonight, which...
Article 1, I don't believe is volunteer appointments, is it?
Nancy, it's in two weeks, I believe.
Okay, Bob?
What's on your agenda is actually only a piece of Article 1, just to be clear, it's communication, social media, and so...
It's a fraction of Section 1, Article 1. It's a fraction of, of Section 1, Article 1. Other public comment? If you'd like to speak, just raise your hand. Tell us who you are, what's on your mind. Seeing none? Bob? Any comments?
I just want to make a couple of quick comments. One is, this coming Thursday, the Finance Committee will vote a budget. I know there's been a lot of interest in financial information, override information. And just to state it publicly, it's a bit of a jump of the gun, if you will, to put information up on the website until the Finance Committee has actually given a budget. Because it's the Finance Committee's budget that will go to town meeting. And, you know, depending on what they do Thursday, the superintendent and I will then react and design documents appropriately. So I just wanted to make that clear. At your next meeting, Town Council will be present as you close the warrant. And one of the issues I put forth to him is to give us a reminder of the do's and don'ts of ballot questions. I know there's been a whole series of comments and questions around town on that. And for anyone that has a comment or a question, please send it to me and I'll forward it to Ray. I have, I have forwarded some questions to him in the past. My general statement on, on this issue will be, free speech is a powerful tool. Most people will enjoy unlimited free speech regardless of what ballot questions are on or off. That's, that should be everyone's default understanding. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Okay. We're a little behind the curve here tonight at 7:15, where we're gonna start talking about the RMHS boiler. We're, we picked that topic up right now. Gail, you're here tonight? And it's Joe?
Andrew.
Okay. So you're gonna learn about boilers tonight, Gail?
I'm all over boilers.
Okay.
No boiler, there's another document.
Oh, great when finance people talk about boilers.
So this is a, this will keep tonight's, good evening, good evening. This will keep most of tonight's rapid tension about heating and cooling. So why don't you take us through the topic of the MSBA Statement of Interest?
I will start it very quickly and then turn it over to Joe. So just to let folks know.
Do you want to go to full screen up there? Lower right corner? Up, up, right there.
Thank you. So we presented this on February 5th to the school committee as well in order to obtain their approval in order to move forward with.
Right.
The statement of interest. Do you want me to go? Do you want me? So what we are here tonight is to obtain the Board of Selectmen's approval. So as part of the currently proposed FY19 capital plan, we do have funding in there to replace boiler number two at the high school. So we are looking for approval to move forward through the MSBA's accelerated repair program to submit a statement of interest with them to determine whether or not we would be invited into their program, in which case we might be eligible to receive approximately 50 percent reimbursement for the cost of the boiler. So this would be, so there are two different parts that you can participate in. The accelerated repair program is for smaller items versus their other program, which you would do if you were going for a school replacement. So as part of this, there is an application that's comprised of two main parts. One is an educational impact in history. That, what they are looking to do is make sure that what you're attempting to do is not to put repairs into a building, in which case you're, in a couple of years, going to be tearing down or doing major renovations for. The other one is facility background in history, which goes through your maintenance program, information on the town, the capital program, a lot of what we do. So Joe Huggins and I each completed our parts, reviewed it with John, and then school committee. And really what they're looking for is to make sure, again, that this isn't part of a larger renovation plan. The requirements are that the value of the project needs to exceed $250,000. Currently, the boiler replacement is estimated to be at $585,000. And that's what it's currently in the capital plan for next year. So we do meet that hurdle. The other requirement is that the system being replaced must be a minimum of 20 years old. The boiler is exactly 20 years old. So we, and, correct me if I'm wrong on this one, Joe, this was a little bit before my time.
Right.
This replacement, this boiler was not replaced as part of the high school renovation.
We did put a new boiler in.
One, not number two.
Boiler number, boiler number two was dragged out of the old building. They've engineered it out. And what they decided to do was convert it from an oil-fired steam boiler to hydraulic. And at the time, Reading did not have a water treatment program. So when that boiler was pulled into the new building, it was already sustained some damage to it. So, and over the last few years, we've been progressively spending more and more money on this particular unit, which is why we targeted it for replacement.
I thought your application was very well done. I went through it. It's self-explanatory, but very clear.
Yes. And one of the other requirements is that the funding for the project must be allocated and approved. So since this is part of the FY19 plan, we also meet that hurdle. And the intent is that if we do not get invited into the program, that we would continue with the project.
And if we are invited into the plan, when would the reimbursement? Most likely, I understand it's not known with certainty.
It is not known with certainty. Our understanding right now is that the application process closes on Friday. It takes them about eight to 12 weeks to go through the applications, come out and do site processes. What they have told us is it would be next year at this time that they would be looking to do the projects and then we would get reimbursed.
Sometime after that.
So is there any danger of waiting that year? Or would you want to proceed with it and then we just get reimbursed?
You actually can't, sorry, you can't proceed with it ahead of time. So we're not able to do the replacement and then get reimbursed. You do always have the option.
Right.
I don't want to jinx anyone, so knock on wood. If something were to happen and we needed to proceed, we would just pull ourselves from.
Program.
The program and just proceed on our own.
But I mean, there's no, right, so.
The only.
It has another year.
There is no.
Right.
Risk in waiting.
We've already started with a full design, which is gonna be done next week on the, on the boiler. And that will be ready to go when the capital becomes available in July. We'll know by then if we're invited into the program.
And Bob, if this hits in, say, FY20, the reimbursement would be, would just displace more funding in the capital plan, I assume? Or does it go back in the general fund?
It would go back in the general fund if it came in later, like another fiscal.
Okay.
What percentage do they reimburse us now?
Approximately 50 percent. It's each town, it's town by town. And part of.
We're around 48 to 50 percent.
Tell us.
So we're hopeful what they have said. So the application is due this Friday. So if we obtain permission this evening, we have everything in place. We will obtain all of the signatures and make sure they have everything that they need. We actually just covered these, so we can go through that. And then, once part of the funding, so this, they get a certain amount of funding each year. So the number of communities they invite in depends upon the number of applications. So we do know that if the amount of applications exceeds the funding, they can alter the requirements and say, we're going to look at only replacements over 25 years or 30 years. So it's really dependent upon.
Got it. And you don't know that before you go back?
We don't.
No.
We don't know that. We do know, last year or the year before, they actually did increase the year of the boilers to 30 years because they had.
More than.
More than one. And each community is only allowed to do one statement of interest per community. So this is the one that we're moving forward with. We feel it's a solid application, but again, it'll depend on funding.
Right. The only question I had is, you're replacing this with three condensing boilers. So that gives you an opportunity to proportionalize the boiler running during warmer, cooler weather, but not cold weather.
Right. The condensing, condensing boilers will run more efficiently in the cooler weather. And they'll also modulate better than the logic Cleaver Brooks that's in there right now.
So you'll get some fuel savings out of it.
We will. We'll get less energy going out the stack and pouring to the building.
And so do you have, do you have a stack or is it just PVC out the side of the wall?
Right. The way it is gonna work right now is the existing boiler is gonna have its own venting along with the hot water boiler we have in there.
Okay.
And the design calls for it to be exhausted out the front of the building, the generator, and then to go up the roof line with 10-inch steel double-wall pipe to the roof line.
What's the expected life of these three?
Oh, it'd be 25 to 30 years at least. And we have a water treatment program in place. So that really extends the life of the boilers tremendously.
Excellent.
And so whenever the work gets done, it'll probably be done when school's not in session? So you can work on it or? Yeah, I mean, the, the work is anticipated to take around six to seven weeks total demolition and installation of the new boilers. And then the commissioning process would happen after that. If we don't get invited in and we award a contract in July, we would probably start this in September or October. Can you do it while school's in session? Yeah, we can. We're gonna have to make, it would be, yeah, it would be staged in a way that we'd be least disruptive to the school department. Get it done. Right, exactly. Get it in before the heating season.
Given that number two was a steam boiler, is this?
It was, it was a steam boiler.
Is it abated already?
Oh, yes. Yeah, there's no asbestos in the high school at all.
All right, great.
Yeah.
I have no other questions. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Very clear.
Feel free to waive my reading of this at any point.
I apologize.
I think you have to start.
This is the approval of the MSBA Statement of Interest. Move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated February 2nd, 2018, for the Reading Memorial High School located at 62 Open Road, Reading, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following efficiency.
Mr. Berman moves to waive the reading of the rest of the article. Any objection?
None.
Seeing none? Okay. Any discussion on the motion?
You need a second.
I'm sorry. Wait, second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Four zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very well done.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Great, great application. All right.
Keep you posted.
Yes, thank you. The next topic is the adoption of the Reading Housing Production Plan, a revision of the Gene, back up?
Yes.
Do you want the small one slide change that you suggested, Eric? Because they know.
Oh, Housing Production. That works.
I think if I might, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Earlier, I explained to the board we emailed a couple of changes that had happened since you last saw the Housing Production Plan. It was just wording, and then there was an update from the consultant. So, you know, I don't think there's any significant change, certainly, from when you last saw it. And we didn't receive any comments or questions. You have any now is the time to ask.
The only comments I have, I read this over the weekend, to the degree that there are projects that are projected and not yet cemented down. And we heard earlier from Eaton Lakeview residents, 40R, 467 Main Street might be another, that the chart on page 643, as well as the references that might appear elsewhere in the document, on pages. One moment here, not cooperating. There's a reference on 43 and another reference on 29, for example, at Eaton. I didn't, I can go back and look at the one for 467. But maybe mark those as either forecast or estimated, to the extent that they are at this point in, in active discussion. Does that make sense? So you'd put an F for estimated in the headers, for example? Or you could put it in the entries? Does that make sense?
The table is projected right here.
Yeah, the, the narrative above says the table below projects the town of Reading. And I believe this is the template that the state.
Formatted it?
Yeah.
Okay. Then is the sentence above it eligible for reformatting? Or you could say the table below? Is there another word besides projects that didn't immediately jump off the page to me? Estimates?
Anticipates.
Anticipates? That's kind of lawyer speak.
I mean, none of these projects really are guaranteed. I mean, they're all sort of spec.
Well, yeah, and I think to, you know, obviously, they're high sensitivity. It's like, this is a big project. And you saw it's a, you know, and, and the neighborhood, because it's a 40B, has a clear recognition that, you know, they'd like to work with the project rather than against the project because it's gonna come. But, you know, to their, to the point they raised earlier, I think that's, at least that's what I'm hearing John say, is that we, if we can't, it, it does say project. So it doesn't say that it's in concrete. I get that. I'm just looking to.
There's another way to do it, too. At the end of that sentence, you've already said, note that the denominator will be updated. You might say, note that the numerator will be updated when the projects are finalized. So it's consistent with there being some sense of future change potentially. Does that make sense? Or is that even possible? The table below projects the town of Reading SHI. Note that the numerator of year-round projects will be updated after projects are finalized. And, and projects from whatever, FY21 are, are estimated. And then note that the denominator will be updated by the census, blah, blah, blah. Some, is that possible?
FY20, right.
Wherever it cuts in, wherever the ambiguity is. FY20, yeah.
FY21, actually.
I don't technically know when that's gonna be. We're dependent on the federal government to do the census work.
I'm not touching the census thought at all. I'm adding a new thought additional to it that says, in addition to the not denominator refresh, there's a numerator refresh that will be based on the actual projects when they're done. And that some projects below are estimated. So we're not touching the census language at all. We're just adding a new clause. Bob?
I think, I think it's clear, but just to state it, the three lines at the top of this chart are not included in any county.
Correct.
And what I'm. This is just telling you that.
In addition, the numbers there may not necessarily be what they end up being. Right?
I think that would be the logical conclusion, absolutely.
Right.
I don't know how you could not draw that conclusion, but.
If there's no objection, I guess I'd, I'd put a reference after the first period and say, note that the numerator, note that the projects in the first three lines are.
Why don't you just not, why don't you just, why don't you just not name them?
Note that Johnson was.
State wants them.
State wants them. I'm sure the state wants to see that.
The project on the first three lines would be added to the numerator?
Are, are, are forecasted.
If and when built.
If and when built.
Would you say are forecast? Are forecasted?
Right. The reason is, this is called a plan. And people may view this as the plan of record, rather than it's a forecast of a plan. That's all I'm trying.
Is that gonna, is that gonna somehow disqualify this plan? Gene?
Does that put us at, is that, is that harder to do than it sounds? Does it put us at risk?
I'm not sure I have your language. That's my only.
I'm not fluffing at the language. It's more this.
That they're, that they're forecast. That they're forecast.
First three projects.
Okay. So you know, you would like it to read that note that the projects on the first three line are forecasted.
That the, the unit counts of the projects on the first three lines are forecasted. That would, that would be, that would be enough.
Are forecasts. Okay.
Just so you know, those are the unit counts that the state has seen and approved.
Right.
Doesn't mean they'll be built. Doesn't mean it'll change.
We all know that.
That's why.
Yes, I understand.
Well, the Sanoco got approved last night, so, but may not get built.
Okay.
But we apply for the subsidized housing inventory, we apply for that to be added to the subsidized housing inventory when we, after we approve it under 40R. So.
This is all clear to everyone except the public. That's the problem. It's all clear to everyone inside. The outside has no idea what this means.
Okay. So we're gonna rewrite this to say, note that the unit counts on projects on the first three lines are forecasted.
Yeah, that's enough.
Okay.
That's fine.
That'll work fine. That was, that was my only comment. I thought the rest of it was clear.
Okay.
And it was well done.
I thought it was very well done.
I totally agree. Excellent.
Any other comments? If not, I'll call for a motion.
Well, actually, just one other really quick comment, Mr. Chair. I think that it's unfortunate, maybe, that maybe the only five of over people in this room really have kind of taken a look at this housing production plan. Because the fact that we actually did one, and of high quality, is what actually garnered us the ability to even have, to be talking about a safe harbor. So it shows that the town and the staff, this board, take affordable housing incredibly seriously. And we're, and the fact that this is done the way it is has given us a tool to basically maybe shape some projects that other folks might want to do that we might not think are so great. So before we just vote on it and send it on its way for the next five years, I just really want to compliment Gene and Julie, Bob, and the rest of the staff on this. This is something that we can really be proud of. The fact that there's only maybe 10, 12, not even that many towns that even have a safe harbor is really a testament to the commitment of the town to really, you know, do affordable housing in a way that makes sense. So I just didn't want to let that go past.
Thank you, Barry. I should have, I should have thought to do that myself. I can't tell you how much time the staff put in this, and they really deserve, that they're unsung heroes to get this done. Your second point is also true. My daughter lives in Winchester. They're in the process of putting a 600-unit 40B in an area of the town to try to get current in one effort. And I said to her, have you gone to the ZBA and asked for the housing production plan? And they said, yeah, they don't have one.
That is, that is the housing production plan, 600 units?
Yeah, the plan is just get current. So Barry's exactly right. This is a body of work which seems like it's bureaucracy at work, but it actually is, makes us eligible to be able to compete for a safe harbor status, which is, which is the only reason, or one of the only reasons we have it. And not every town puts this time and energy in, and this is, although it's a formulaic report, it's important stuff, and it spells, it makes us qualified. So again, kudos to the staff for getting this done. Any other comments from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Secretary?
Mr. Chairman, move with the Board of Selectmen to approve the housing production plan as presented.
We have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Four zero. Thank you, Gene. Thank you for staying up. Okay. Next topic is 40R projects that permits revolving fund? Where did it go?
So some of the data in this table changed last night. I haven't had a chance to update it.
I could just give you a minute of a background, because I learned a lot, actually, a few years ago when I went through some Reading history, even while I was here, I must have missed it. The inspections revolving fund, through act, through vote of town meeting, can add projects at any time. They can be 40B, they can be 40R, they can be neither. And that's a discussion we just wanted to open with you tonight because next meeting you're going to close the warrant. We want to know if there should be such an article, one's drafted in your warrant. The reason the timing's important is because at least one of these projects on the list will begin clearly before next November, or at least we hope so.
Right.
Apparently, the intention is there. It's a philosophical discussion. I think my point to you in my overview was, I think it's appropriate to put the article on and then table it, vote it up or down as town meeting wishes, but it's a discussion that's important to have because it's your only opportunity to have it. Once one or more of these projects begin.
This is updated.
This is new today.
No, but I mean, in our package.
This is new today.
We just updated it after last night.
Sorry. Yeah. So that's the background of why Gene has kind of given you a quick overview.
So what's the decision point?
There isn't a decision tonight. It's just background for a discussion at the next meeting on closing the warrant.
For closing the warrant.
To warrant article. And the current balance of that revolving fund as we sit here today?
Oh, we're sharing. I don't remember.
She walked out.
Ballpark?
400-ish?
Thousand?
Ballpark.
But I guess the question is, how much, how much are we going to need to actually permit these projects and inspect these projects?
Yeah, and just to take a sidebar, at Gene's expense, because she has to sit here and listen, we still don't know what kind of infrastructure improvements we need to make in the downtown. I've put forward a budget that asks for some money to figure that out.
Right.
But we don't know the results. I have to, you know, hold on for the three enterprise funds and the general fund for what it costs. But this could certainly be a very reasonable source of some of the funds, just as a matter of...
So you wouldn't exhaust, you don't think you'll exhaust that 400 something? There's no way?
The only way we're using it now is, there's 190,000 in the current year, which I will tell you, we will reduce at town meeting for economic development and other expenses that Jean's department has.
Right.
You know, in theory, there was three years' worth of an economic development director. In theory, now there's two years. Since there's a vacancy, we'll be able to reduce some of that usage.
Are we not, we're considering, you know, filling the vacancy?
Yeah. Yeah. But there's been some period of time where it's vacant, so there's some amount of offset that we don't need.
A little bit of play that...
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Gene.
Okay, we're 20 minutes behind. We're catching up. Change of beneficial interest, Liquor Junction.
I've been getting texts from the police department. They're tied up with something. Christine will be here as soon as she can. Christine's here. How do you like that? Okay. Perfect. I should look around first. The beneficial interest and the next one were straightforward. I included the police background information.
So for those watching at home, I'm sorry...
I'm not aware that anyone's here for that, but if they are, they certainly will speak up. It's all straightforward.
Okay.
I'm here for Anthony's coal-fired pizza.
Okay, come on up.
Welcome up.
Yep. So we'll take these...
You can do that one, sorry.
Yeah, we'll do Anthony's coal-fired pizza. For those watching at home, this is a formulaic change. Anytime there's a change of manager or change in ownership, there's a filing which the town gets a copy of and notes the change. I went through these over the weekend. We see a lot of these, police weigh-in, background checks whatsoever. I didn't see anything out of ordinary.
And everything's been approved by the police.
Right. Any other questions by the board?
No.
Yes.
The Board of Selectmen approved the... Sorry.
Yeah, I had your pizza at the Wood End PTO. You donated that, so, thank you. That was good. Broke people in.
The goal is, I'm from, I live on Main Street, so a couple of my kids go to Wood End. So actually, next month, the entire, entire month on Thursdays for the PTO.
Oh, great.
Yes, and anybody that comes in, 20% of the story goes back to the PTO.
That's great.
And much. I'm trying to get back to the community as much as I can.
Thank you so much for doing that.
For the record, would you mind just saying your name and your address?
My name is Carlos Alberto.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Move with the Board of Selectmen to approve the change of manager for annual all alcoholic beverages restaurant license for Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza of Reading LLC, 48 Walkersburg Drive, Reading, Massachusetts.
Mr. Furman seconds the motion. Any further discussion?
The manager need not be named in the motion, I take it?
Correct.
Okay. No questions.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Four zero.
Thanks.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Buffalo chicken pizza's really good.
Should I?
Please.
Regarding Liquor Junction, move the Board of Selectmen to approve the change of beneficial interest for an annual all alcoholic retail beverage license for Cajal and Kevin LLC, Doing Businesses Liquor Junction, One General Way, Reading, Massachusetts.
Okay. That's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Four zero. All right.
Catch him right up.
Thank you, Christine.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How do you do it?
We have a few safety items. The first one that the Parking Traffic Transportation Task Force met on is, we have been looking, we've gotten a few complaints about Main Street, at Green Street. I don't know, bring me to...
Can you throw up a map just for those?
Yes.
Just open up another window.
I sent a few pictures. I don't know. Or I have it in...
Oh, there might be any email.
Or you just want to do the map? We can do that.
If you have pictures, those are always good. Stick it over there.
And you have volume.
There you go. Perfect.
Let's go full screen now. There you go.
Okay, so the problem with Main Street and Green Street is really the sightlines, where the stop sign is. And we've had, this is a crash out for the past five years, we've had nine crashes there, which is a little bit high for a side road, street coming onto a main road. It's pretty high compared to some of the others in the area. So we were taking a look at that and coming up with ideas of how to make it safer. Every single crash involved there was taking a left-hand turn or going straight across. So we had myself and Officer Scout and Go, and this is what the driver sees when they're trying to take a left-hand turn because of the parking and just the way the sidewalk is.
Oh, it's a clear spirit.
They can't see. So we were proposed, the best safest route would be to make it a right turn only at that intersection.
Christine, can I ask a quick question? So to the left of that is where basically the, it's the Sunoco station where the new development was just got approved. Is there anything that's going to go in, oh, it's Julie, no, they're gone. Anything in that proposal that is going to either change the way people come in and out that sort of, you know, kind of make you rethink this down the road when there's a building there? Or is it part of, is it part of the traffic study in the project? I don't remember reading.
Not formally. One would suppose more traffic coming out of Green Street just makes the situation worse.
Yeah. Okay. Because we're going to do something based on what it is now, but there's going to be 31 units in retail right to the left that might rethink it down the road. I just didn't know that had been, you know, put into the mix.
Seems like it would add to the problem you're already describing, Christine.
Right. So this proposal would add a right turn only sign, which would be, if left alone, just 24 hours all...
Yes, this would be 24 hours.
Without restrictions. Okay.
And there's several options. If you make a right-hand turn only and you really want to be in the other direction, there are a couple of ways to redirect yourself.
Yeah, back to the left on Ash.
Yeah, there's a light, literally, right there.
And this one is now starting to become a real use side road for cut-throughs, so that would help.
Would you put in addition to the arrow, the no...
You could do the no left turn.
With a line through it, yeah?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. Okay. What are we looking for tonight? A motion?
This is just advisory.
Update, okay. Thank you. And then the second topic says...
And then the other one, this came in, this was a request from the Killam School, Sarah Laves, the principal, as well as the PTO. They are proposing, they use, in front of the Killam, this is their drop-off area. So basically, cars line up, you can see all the way up Charles Street.
Yep.
I'm sure everyone knows they go all the way past Wakefield. So what's causing a major backup, Sarah said, is that people are waiting to take a left out of Killam School. So we, they propose, we would propose just a no, a right turn only, no left turn from 7:30 a.m. to 8:30 a.m.
I think you just put wrong the block.
What about the afternoon pickup? Is there any problem?
They don't allow them to go in there in the afternoon. They only allow a morning drop-off. So it's kind of, it stems with the rest of the schools that all do have a one-way flow traffic for their drop-off in the morning.
Oh, that's what that is. Because in our package, the page that doesn't have a name of the address, I thought it was inheriting it from the, if you look at our packet...
Oh, so the amendment, we would need to make, you would need a traffic article that would cover the 7:30 to 8:30 only, no right turn, because we don't have one already.
Okay.
So then the third article is...
No left turn, you mean, right?
What is that?
No left turn?
No left turn, sorry. Yes, right turn only, from 7:30 to 8:30.
I'm sorry, there are three articles in our packet. One is the one for Green Street, which we talked about. There's a second one which has no, no street, no location. It just says right turn only from 7:30 to 8:30.
So that's to enact the article from the, so we could enforce the 7:30 to 8:30 only. So we would add that...
Oh, so you're limiting it to one hour?
For that school, yes. That's all they request.
We've got some other signs, like off Salem Street, there's hours when you could...
Oh, this applies to Killam.
And so we have articles for each time, yes.
Oh, okay.
It didn't, it didn't have the title on it.
Because it's going to be, you could use it in the future for any...
That makes sense.
Never mind. They understand.
Okay.
So you only want it for the duration of drop-offs?
Yes.
You don't want it for the balance of the day, or you don't want to change traffic?
No, they said it all opens up after 8:30 in the morning. After 8:30, it's clear on both sightlines. It's just the morning drop-off. It's causing traffic safety issues on Charles Street.
Okay. I have no objection. This is all, this is part and parcel of a growing town with changing traffic patterns, and we see pinch points and we find a way to address them. I think this is perfectly fine. It's expected what we do. Thank you so much for your time and effort. I'm sorry, is there a question?
Tony, Russell, 130 Johns Street.
Yes.
Specifically referring to the Main Street and Green Street intersection. Before making any changes, I would respectfully request the board look at what the impacts will be on, say, Washington Street, Elliot and Washington, which would be the alternates for getting across town from Green Street.
Now we need a map.
Especially with the addition of the 467 Main Street, 40R project, and the potential 120 units at the end of Lakeview.
I'm sorry, Tony, what streets were you talking about?
Main and Green.
Right.
If you can't take a left out of Main and Green, you'll have to go down Elliot over to Washington.
That is correct. Or you make a right turn and make your turnaround at the light, which is literally half a block out of the way.
It's just that, there can be unintended consequences of changes.
Always can be, of course, but, you know, I mean, there is a, there is a, I mean, and I, nothing wrong with looking at all, but what you're proposing for all of the places that you've brought up is a major traffic study, which is not going to come cheap.
But after a while, I think the traffic pattern corrects itself, and Elliot and Washington Street get loaded. And they're already pretty heavily loaded, but that's signalized intersection. It's wider than Green Street.
So we would like people to use Washington Street, not Green Street, that's the, because of the intersection. It's safer to turn that way.
Yeah. Traffic on Washington Street does back up.
Mm-hmm.
I've done that turn. It's not fun.
Actually, with that in mind, is the signalization at Washington and Main the state, or is it red?
No, that's...
Would we ever, to that point, that there might be changes in timing or changes in duration, would that be part of a later assessment?
We can have, Ron.
Yeah, the engineers can look at that anytime.
Particularly because of the Sunoco station development, the changes in this, I'm sure, I'm sure there'll be some visible impact, yeah?
No.
That's a good input. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I noticed there's signature lines for the Board of Selectmen. Do we need to take a vote on these?
I wasn't sure if you wanted to tonight. This was really meant for your information, if you had any questions and to do any further research.
Good catch, Dan. No, I think this is fine for tonight.
Okay. Yeah, that's all we need for tonight, then.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
All right, next, the 8:45, I'm now 15 minutes ahead. We'll start previewing the warrant for April Town Meeting. So I've made up an hour delay.
I'll slow you down. I still need to get with the town council in terms of the order of the articles, so I'm just really going to discuss the meat of the articles. The first three articles are, as the charter would have us prefer to do. I have a suggestion here that the state of the town and the finance committee report to be deferred to the night the budget is done. We're going to discuss that further.
Right.
And then the traditional articles, not mandated by the charter, are to change the current year's capital program. We have very few changes to amend the current year's budget. One of the challenges, the finance committee's going to vote on March 7th on all these articles. And we are not going to have a final number on snow and ice for any means on March 7th. They're usually voting the last week of March when it's much more certain.
How are we on that, by the way? I didn't ask.
Under budget. Now that you've asked, we'll jinx it, but I think there's 100 or 150 grand surplus still, so we're fine.
Okay.
But actually, I'm going to FinCom Thursday and asking for deficit spending permission because I won't see FinCom again till Town Meeting.
Right.
And there's not a lot of changes in the budget. There's a couple of savings, public safety's had some overtime. I don't recall, I don't think there's a prior year's bill. I don't remember, Sharon had one, maybe. So that may be tabled. There will be surplus materials declared. Article eight, last year, Town Meeting changed the trust setup, but the process annually is still the same. We set aside funds in the general fund and the three enterprise funds to put into OPEB. We purposely don't put them in at the beginning of the fiscal year in case we need them as a hedge against health insurance premiums. We did not need that this year. So those full funding are available, and Town Meeting will be asked to put them in the irrevocable trust. The library has requested some changes to a library materials replacement of revolving fund, just expanding the definition. It's not a large fund. not a large fund. Their uses are, I'm sorry, their language just, again, proposes an expansion of some of the terms.
Quick, go back, Bob, on A to one, we wouldn't know the OPEB contribution until...
Well, we know what's, what's been budgeted for. We could do more or less, but I would suppose the default recommendation would be the amount budgeted for.
Which is what, five?
It's either 500 or 550 in the General Fund. I don't remember.
All right.
And then the enterprise funds are all on a 20-year schedule. As Gene just presented, this would be the time for you to amend the inspections revolving fund if, if you so choose. I do have draft language for most of these articles if you want to see it. Article 11 would be the more traditional approving of revolving funds. Recall that state regulations changed two years ago and now it's more difficult for us to do this. You know, their idea was to make it simpler. We still need this article every year, though. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund Plan, you know, perhaps one day the board will revisit this with the Housing Authority and their board. Reading is still doing it differently than almost everyone and differently than the state model. Different isn't always a bad thing, but I think from time to time, the board should always revisit this. This will renew the way Reading does it. The schools have discussed, and I don't know yet whether they're going to continue with this request to allow for buying digital curriculum longer than three years. As you can imagine, since three years is state law in Massachusetts, the price point past three years is much more affordable. So, if you get permission from Town Meeting to buy digital curriculum for longer than three years, you get a much better...
You're buying access. You're not buying the data. This is like software as a service.
Correct.
Okay.
The schools are concerned whether approval, again, it's a bylaw, whether approval by Town Meeting and then by the Attorney General would actually be timely enough for this summer. It probably will not be, quite frankly. So, whether they choose to go forward with it now or defer it to November is, is up to them.
Okay.
Board of Selectmen, there was an instructional motion at, I believe it was November Town Meeting to rename the board. There will be ample time to discuss that in two weeks. I will say that after discussion with many of my peers and Town Council discussed with some of his peers, we'll, we'll give you a list of all the different options and the pluses and minuses of each.
Okay.
The most common name that has been sort of discussed is Select Board, and that may be a fine choice, but I will tell you, there are some issues in some communities that went that way because, what do you call a member? There's one community that has select men and select women, and one of the women wanted to be called a select man. So, if you really want to get away from gender entirely, that may not do it. What Town Council's advice, and I agree, as a starting point, is Executive Board because that's your role in the Charter.
That describes your function.
The Executive Board describes your function.
Right.
And we'd be a member.
And then everyone would be an Executive Board member. There'd be a Chair and a Vice Chair and a Secretary, but that totally takes out the gender, if that's the objective.
Kind of sounds like something you buy at Home Depot, a Select Board. I mean, I never understood.
Well, I have to say personally, I find the term Select Board is somewhat elitist.
Yeah.
Where's the Select Board?
Where you could go to Alderman.
And Wakefield actually changed to Town Council with a CIL.
That's confusing.
So, it's C-O-U-N-C-I-L.
That's the wrong spelling.
And then we have, and then we have our Town Council.
Well, because there's a city council, and so they are a Town Council, and they have a Town Council with an S-E-L.
You can imagine it's very confusing when they get together.
And so, that's a bit confusing, and, and as, not to steal Ray's humor from next meeting, but he didn't wish to be called a solicitor.
Any sidebar here, what are Board, Board of Aldermen doing about this? Do you have any idea?
That's a good question. You know, I haven't heard.
I don't see an easy one there.
An Alder Board?
No, that's really, I've not heard of an Alder Board.
Usually, those are in cities, so they might just go to City Council.
Yeah.
City Council.
Maybe.
Because Aldermen...
What's Melrose?
Alderman.
Yeah, and they're, and they're cities, so they can probably go to City Council.
Chicago. Really?
So, Bob, just on the process on this, I mean, wasn't, didn't the instructional motion sort of have that the Bylaw Committee would sort of hold hearings on this?
It had, I don't have it with me, but it had...
Have they done anything?
It had two parts. One was to specifically bring an article that would change the name of the Board of Selectmen, period. And the other was to discuss some process for making other gender neutral changes to all of our bylaws, et cetera. Quite candidly, Matt Cronellis has tried for 10 weeks to get the Bylaw Committee to meet and they won't. I don't know how to explain it any simpler than that. So, we had to take this proverbially bow by the horns and come up with a proposal because that's what Town Meeting expects.
This is like a placeholder.
What do you think the cost of doing this, Bob, is? Do we even know?
Well, this cost is, is nothing. It's minor.
And we're avoiding the need to bring this to a Charter amendment, at least at this point. We can wait until the Charter is amended.
This would do the job that I believe Town Meeting asked for. That's up to them to decide. But to fully change all gender neutrality in all documents or to go further than this and change the Selectmen in the Charter would be a much more involved and costly process.
What would you guess that that would be?
I've talked to Ray. I don't, I really don't.
So, basically, the Town Meeting can, can approve the changing of the name, and then next time we have a Charter Commission.
Right.
Whether, how long that is.
Right.
It could just get codified there, but it still can be voted by Town Meeting and be enacted.
Yeah, and I want to make sure you understand that state law calls it the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, any movement there to change the name?
No, not that I've heard. So, that no matter what we do locally, you must always have the powers of, the Board of Selectmen as defined in state law.
Also known as Board of Selectmen.
So, it has to always have a reference.
Right.
You can do a certain amount locally, but you don't want to cut that tie.
So, those towns that changed their name to Select Board, how do they handle that issue?
One town just decided at a meeting like this, just to do it, "We're going to call ourselves this." Any objections? None known? That's what we call ourselves.
No, but I mean, in terms of like when they have to deal with the state, they, they then use the more formal Board of Selectmen. They just do it and...
But you're in uncharted territory because it doesn't follow state law.
It wasn't a bylaw. It was just a, not even a vote of the Selectmen. It was just an indication of, "Yeah, that's a good type."
Oh, they'll, they'll reduce our local aid. Yeah, they already did that.
So, is it safe to say that Ray's going to discuss this with us in two weeks?
Yeah.
Let's move.
Article 9, why is that being sponsored by us rather than CPDC? Shouldn't it be CPDC?
Revolving fund or, I'm sorry, I have a different...
No, the zoning one.
No, the one on the screen is different from the one in your book. You've got to look at the screen.
Yeah. Which one, Dan?
Article 9.
It's not the Article 9.
That's the zoning one.
What's the content?
What's the title?
What's the zoning one?
Oh, that's coming up.
Oh, that's why. I thought you skipped over it.
No, that's, that's a good point.
It is CPDC.
It should be CPDC.
It should be CPDC. Yeah, good catch. That's the next one. That's the zoning bylaw change. And then the last two are the budget. First is accepting Chapter 90 and the second is the budget. I did get an update from Ray earlier today, excuse me. He is going to be available in person for the first four nights of Town Meeting. Typically, he's only available for the first two nights, so that makes the planning a lot easier.
Easier.
Anybody think this is going more than two?
I would have to be candid again with you that if an override fails, I think the budget's going to go on for days.
Yes, it could.
I, I think it could just get an enormous amount of discussion and probably a warranted amount of discussion.
Right.
So, I do believe the budget should go last, and we'll schedule it as best we can.
Okay.
So, that's all I have.
All right.
Thanks, Bob.
Let's see.
Remember CPDC. So, the next thing goes?
Yes.
Did we get anything on it?
All right.
Something was in your pocket.
H, a missing H.
Yeah, there's like a one-page...
Just a one-page.
Yeah.
Was it sent separately?
Is that over the number? Seeing it during...
It should have been over the weekend.
No, no.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
It was right into the warrant and then...
Can you throw it up on the screen?
Yeah, I will.
Oh, yeah, you're right. It's, it's out of order. I think it might be toward the end.
It shouldn't be in there.
If someone has a page, they'll let me know.
I'm looking. Well, he just looked behind me. Just do it this way.
That's why I had to ask you earlier.
Oh, that's, are you asking about it there?
Yeah. I think I is at the end. I, that's, not I.
I also, I was going to do this earlier, but you had a roomful. I do have some discussion about the balanced budget and the override budget, just so the public can see.
Okay.
So, are these sort of the impact figures and...
The things that made the cut and didn't make the cut.
Oh, okay.
You want me to do that before the goals? I'm happy to.
Go ahead.
I'm going to do that.
So, this is an important topic. I think this is the first time the public will have heard outside of an email or print, the priorities for the town side which are funded.
Right.
Remember, we started with a list of 30 and there were a couple of additions towards the end.
So, so by count, for what that's worth, there were 30 requests and 21 of them are, will be funded as part of the override. You'll see I added something new that was not listed as 30, although it sort of snuck in. There was police overtime, but there wasn't fire. After reviewing their budget over the last week, they need more overtime, quite honestly.
And this is for, this will be for 19?
This is for FY '19. Let me go over...
And this is part of the override.
Yep, correct.
Funding, if you should at that.
Let me discuss particularly the issues. I took all your priorities up to a point and then I differed, and I'll just describe the differences. I think the things we had in common are simple enough. This is your composite rank over in column L.
Yep.
Here's the things that didn't make it and the composite rank. It's a little easier to see it on this display. So, effectively, these three items, one without a number, got placed ahead of some of your choices, and I'll describe them. Technology equipment, quite simply because it's easy to cut in the future year and it gives us flexibility.
Right.
A long discussion I had with DPW, they had three seasonal workers requested. You and I had both ranked the Highway 1 last. They specifically asked me, they would rather have this one than the other two for reasons they explained, which made logical sense. So, it's DPW seasonal. It's just different. And then there's this fire number.
Bob, can you, can you explain, I think I understand, but I think, just in looking at this, I know people have a big question on this. So, part of the rationale for adding four additional firefighters was that they're thinly staffed. One goes down on vacation or injured.
Right.
It creates a lot of overtime. So, if we're hiring four, the rationale is that overtime should go down, in theory.
Correct.
So, why are we doing that and still adding 40,000 of overtime? Is that because it takes a while to ramp up? Is it because we're still going to need overtime? I think that's, that's going to be, to be explained.
Yes, to all the points you made. As you've heard from both, both chiefs, the hiring process is slow. So, if the override is passed and we act as quickly as we can and we get openings in the academies as quickly as we can, there is zero chance there's four fighters in July. The best we could probably hope for is two by December. So, that won't fix the overtime problem for the first year. Generally speaking, and I haven't had this discussion with the chiefs, I personally don't expect more than two or three at a time because you need to have a slot in the academy. There's no way we're going to get four or five, from my experience. So, that's, that's the primary driver. And overtime's up again this year, both in police and fire. And, you know, again, that provides us future flexibility if things go as, as I think you and I would hope. And overtime pressures do come down, that's great. That's more funding for other areas of the town. So, the things that did not make the cut that maybe would have otherwise, again, is the two DPW issues, the engineering, the cemetery, and actually parks. There was a clerk primarily for the Town Clerk's Office, but to be shared in Mass Department, and those are the real ones that got bumped. The other things were ranked more lowly anyways. Just to hit the last topic, which I know has gotten some discussion out there, I'll explain what I did and why.
Bob, is this the one, did you, so you sent this to us?
Yes.
That's correct.
The impact, you know, on the average single-family home, if you will.
Would you revise those numbers from...
It's right here, $488. In the draft versions that we had discussed, we had projected what they might be next fall, and that math would suggest something over $500. But we don't know what the tax rate's going to be next fall at all. And we felt the most accurate and honest assessment is if the override is passed, and it was passed today and assessed today, this is what it would cost people today.
And that's the delta only. That does not include the statutory two and a half.
So, next year, when the tax rate is set, the existing tax base will go up by two and a half percent, and then this will be added on top. So, this will not go up by another two and a half percent.
And if there's a rate differential.
Correct.
That could impact 488.
Any statement other than this one is an estimate.
Yeah.
This is a fact.
This is the only thing that you can actually pin your hat, you know.
But a year from now, even that estimate and that fact will be different.
I'm quite sure.
Yeah, so it...
Yeah, the average single-family home will change.
Right. So, 488 won't be true in a year, but it's true today.
Does residential appreciate in assessed value faster or slower than CIP? Most years faster, but we don't know.
Does commercial property go up more than it did this year? I mean, there's a jillion things.
Right. So, this, and then, you know, 176 again is, is the town number, and I don't know that we need to discuss this tonight, but you will need to decide the wording of the ballot question, and Ray will be here to...
Could you put that up? And there's been a big request from the S. Redding and other people that that be posted clearly in a website somewhere, at page four of the packet, essentially.
Just to highlight, this is just my, after listening to you, this is my statement. So, this may or may not be you.
So, Bob, Ray hasn't seen this or...
Oh, yeah, he's seen.
And he's blessed it, he's...
He said you don't have to be quite so detailed.
Well, we want to be.
Yeah, I think we want to be and we want to be clear.
So, he's okay with this language. There's nothing wrong with it, but he just wanted to make sure we knew we didn't have to be as detailed.
Can we, can we approve it?
Kind of while we're on that point, Bob.
Yeah.
I actually got a couple of calls, and I don't know if any of the rest of you did, about a statement that was made about information dissemination on the website.
Okay.
And I, and I think it was a general statement that actually made sense to me. I didn't actually think about it after I read it.
Did you see that one, John?
I think I caught wind of it later, yeah.
So, essentially, what it said was, you made a comment in your opening remarks that said, "We, some people thought we put out too much information," and, you know, we need to, and you, you were soliciting how it should be. You were soliciting ideas, and I thought it was right on point, still do. But I got a couple of calls that said, "Are you going to leave something out now?" And I, and I know that that's never your intention. I mean, quite the opposite, actually, is that if somebody wants to know something...
It's up to the public as to what it wants, but the public had told me prior to the last two weeks, "You gave us way too much last time. You overwhelmed us."
In terms of the question or in terms of the materials on the website?
The materials on the website was too much. Everyone loved the one-page summary that Jane did.
Right.
And the rest of it, it had listening session minutes and presentations, and they just...
I guess what I'm saying is, when I was questioned about it.
Okay.
It was, "What are you going to leave out?" I said, "No material facts will be left out."
Correct.
It's going to be simplified, direct, and, you know, and that's kind of the way that I, and I, I just think it's important to say it out loud that, you know, like the, you know, what you've built so far, all material, all very direct, all very factual.
Yeah.
But not burying people in the weeds so deep that you can't get the material facts out.
I think FinCom's discussion last week was probably on point in terms of what most people want. Give me a summary and let me click for more details, and then let me click for even more details and so on. Make me work for it, but make it easy for me to understand.
Right.
And I think that's the executive summary.
Yeah.
So, we don't want to just say, "Look, here's a Picasso." There's all kinds of things here.
Or worse, if and gone, right.
I'm really just saying this so that if anybody else had shared that same concern that somebody called me with.
Yeah, it's not a mission.
That they would know that it's not, it's not give less factual information. It's, you know...
The only, the only comments I got was, "Can we please take down the 2016 override that says, big letters, 7.5 million?" So, I don't know if that's been done.
One of the principles that we set for ourselves upon 2016's failure was to be clear, to try to give folks the data, but also the root brick that made sense out of the data. And Bob is right. There's a high-level summary which will satisfy some number of folks, but many of us want to dig down and say, "Well, how did you arrive at that number?" And more importantly, "What did you leave in and what did you leave out?" Fortunately, to do that, you're into, you're into a lot of data, all of which is available on the town website, that can be daunting to some to look at. But we err on the side of levels of abstraction. As far deep as you wanted to dive, it's all there, including all the video to discuss it and all the commentary from town staff to provide color and context. So, I think we did a pretty good job. Could have been done better. Anything can be done better. Okay. Any other comments?
There's the language that I drafted, question one. I'm happy to post it, but it's just my, my language.
Has Ray looked at this?
Yeah.
Okay, and so we can enumerate the individuals?
Yes, you can do it this way.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve question one as worded on this slide.
A second.
One question for me. Were there alternate constructions that Ray had considered?
I considered even more detail, splitting up Public Works, Finance, Technology, and Human Oils Services and Inspection.
No, but for example, you have four firefighters, five police officers, but no other head count is enumerated. Is there any other head count?
That's got the overtime in it, right?
Yes, it does.
I'm just looking at heads. You've got heads specified for those two, but for no other role.
You would, you would then have to be specific, like after Public Works, you'd have to say something in parentheses.
Well, for example...
It became a very unwieldy sentence.
I get it. Where's Gail in that number? Not Gail, Sharon.
Finance. Just the word finance.
Okay.
I think that, I think most people understand that there are some underlying things to each one of those major headers, and that's plenty as it is.
That's where I ended up.
I think the idea of enumerating police officers and firefighters, I actually think people appreciate understanding that, and, you know, and it doesn't...
I agree.
Doesn't complicate the, the question.
Yeah, except for the discussion that you've had. I probably would have put public safety in a dollar figure, but I think you're right.
Yeah.
That spelling out exactly what you're getting is...
I feel like that'll work.
And the dispatcher is in there, too?
No dispatch.
That's left out.
No dispatcher.
I mean, they'll also be in the backup material. There'll be a sort of summary page of not just on the town.
When you say backup material, what do you mean?
Well, the stuff that might be on the town.
Not to the ballot.
Not the ballot, but on the, on the town website.
Absolutely.
It'll say, "This is, and then this is the school, what they voted for."
And this is a good example where we could put this exact language and then someone could click on a link and get more information.
Yeah, that would point to the school.
Right.
Matter of fact, Bob, you know, using the ballot question on the website as a, as a link, as a link out might actually be...
Hyperlink, hyperlink the totals and...
Yeah.
All right. Motion on the floor. We have a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor? Four, zero?
Very well.
Thank you.
I got a quick text. Apparently, there's a major accident at South Street, between South Street and the Stonem Line with a, apparently, it's closed off for investigation and 128 is closed off as well, so.
We kind of heard all the scramble when we were sitting there.
Christine ran out pretty quick, too.
Yes. Yes.
All right.
And that will go at the top of the warrant that we're going to close, right?
Yeah.
Make sure you do that.
Article I, I'm going to propose we defer till when we're all back together again, I think there's-
Thank you.
There's value in getting all of us back together for that, so unless there's an argument for the alternative, I think it's a better-
What was that?
That's Article I?
Policies, yeah.
Yeah.
So do you want to-
I think Andy wanted-
Do goals, H, John?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we skipped.
Yeah, yes, please.
I'll just go top to bottom, here's a quick summary. We are here, we're in column H, obviously if something's done, it's going to stay done, which I hope so.
Was that in the double Q?
I haven't had a chance to talk to Andy, but one of your goals was to expound and expand charitable giving options, and I just don't see any bandwidth for anyone for that right now, quite currently.
So this is our-
Clearly, these are the official 25 goals voted last summer.
For-
For this current fiscal year.
Okay. So when are we going to talk about the ones for next week?
Next year.
Next fiscal year.
After town meeting.
Okay, all right.
And otherwise, all those goals have been met. Sharon has given me an update on some finance policies, she was in to describe them to you, they're about half done. Some of the portion that's not done, requested and been made to FinCom, we really can't do more than request, no PEP policy, so even though we don't have one from FinCom, you know, I suppose the town's effort is, is complete. So Sharon's nearly complete on that. I got an update from Gene a couple days ago on employee retention, it's a tough issue, I think we'll just kind of leave it at that for now, we're seeing vacancies for a longer period of time, as you know, the employment markets are extremely strong, and with an override hanging over, it's not an attractive place to go work if you don't know the whole story. So for now, we'll have to win for the best.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
How, how'd we do?
Very good, thank you.
You're allowed to bring the numbers and hold them up during the-
I'll skip over the ones that are complete, I have, I have asked, I don't remember how much discussion I've had with you, but I'm in the middle of collective bargaining, next week there'll be an update through executive session for the eight unions, and it made logical sense that we defer the personnel policies till those are complete.
Okay.
I will say that, well, I'll get back to one of the goals. Let's see, collective bargaining, again, we should have those wrapped up by the third fiscal quarter.
Line 22, you have it at 40% throughout the rest of the year, do you not think-
Because I don't, I don't know yet, I-
You don't know what you don't know, all right.
Exactly. So we'll pick that up in a minute.
Cable negotiations, you don't see those coming to fruition by the end of the year?
You're going too fast.
Sorry, line-
Housing plan done, I do want to discuss this section, we'll skip it for now. Cable negotiations, you know, the town council's been, you know, in place, Matt has had some meetings, we did get, not exactly related, but we extended one of the carriers on the water tower.
Right.
I do want to bring that back in front of the board in April. I guess the question is, what did I imagine cable negotiations for this fiscal year to be, and it turns out it's going to take longer than I imagined, which is why I put 25%. It's going to go on for next year, clearly.
Isn't that what it's due though?
Yeah, we're not, we're not in any jeopardy by that, and the opportunity that we've uncovered is, it's within a three-year window, so we could get both Comcast and Verizon under the same set of negotiations, and whether that's good or bad, I'd leave that for another day to discuss.
Actually, the, our consultant said that that's actually better to do, if I remember correctly.
I'm quite sure Matt will be reaching out to Dan and John to set up another meeting on that. The MWA North Reading project I had put as 100% complete because I thought North Reading was walking away.
Meh.
Interested in us taking them to dinner again, so.
Oh, really? No, they're taking us out?
Yes. They walked away because they believe they had a deal with Andover.
And?
My understanding is Andover's town meeting did not agree with the deal.
They would not, they would not honor the 99-year term.
So North Reading is highly motivated in coming back to the MWA and Reading if we'll have them. And we have spent money for them and we've been a good neighbor, but, you know, our patience is perhaps a little shortened.
Yep.
So do we have an MOU with them, or didn't we have one?
No.
We were in the process of, right?
They told us to go away.
They told us to stop.
Stop for a year.
Yeah, we put a lot of time and effort into it, and, you know, not to say it was wasted because we've made some planned improvements to our system, which are good things, but-
Bob, what's this 99-year agreement you're alluding to?
That's what they asked for.
North Reading had asked for a 99-year agreement with Andover to provide water, and I believe the Andover town meeting cut it to 25 years or something like that.
Wasn't good enough.
And that was not good enough.
With a rate accelerator at 20 years.
I was going to say the-
I mean, there was a series of things that went on.
And a termination option at five, at 20 years, so it was like-
I don't know, town meetings got to negotiate.
Well, this one did.
It's like that.
My understanding is they have walked away from Andover, but obviously you can walk away from anyone and walk back, so.
Okay.
The town of Reading needs to decide, look, how much I do in-
Right, our tone here is going to be a little different the second time around.
Yeah.
I think it'll be a different conversation.
I believe it will be.
We all, as staff, we all feel differently this time, it's like, we did our job and now what?
Well, the good news is that once you do that, do all the work and they walk away, they come back, it generally gets done quicker.
And we have good relations with North Reading, they help us out quite a bit with the health agent and many other areas.
Oh, yeah, we still have very good relations.
And they respond on mutual aid, you know, instantly, their chief was in town on that Saturday afternoon, instantly.
Any other comments from the board?
Amy and Laura, Jim, are both working on the historical preservation archival, they've applied for a grant, they won't know till May, so I don't think there's going to be much completed in this fiscal year, but if they get funding, that's a better-
What's the archival part of that, is that also included in the library in some fashion?
Yeah, it would probably all be under the library, although Laura may have some interest. I don't think we can decide what to do with volunteer board training till you figure out the board of selectmen's policy on volunteers, which was a question earlier, so whether that gets tucked in at the end of this fiscal year, I don't know.
Okay.
And then community events is another thing I would suggest removing, I might give you a summary of what we're doing, but it's, to me, just not a priority.
Yep, got it.
Long-term planning, I think is where we need to put a future agenda item together and really talk about all these issues.
You bet.
There's a lot of big things there, I met with staff today to talk about the cell tower, so I can give you a good update, I have a pretty good understanding of the process with the DPW garage, Gene has presented me some options for a master plan, and I will tell you, minimum spend is 150 to 200,000, which I'm not in favor of. Andy won't be here to give you economic development priorities, but you saw from the list the 16 projects, his short stay was very worthwhile, and he's responsible for all of them.
Andrew Carone.
Yes, Andrew Carone, he made a big difference.
Increased the skits.
He absolutely-
He did a really good job.
Leave us a roadmap for the development that would involve the DPW land.
Not as much on that as the other projects, but some of it.
Are we tasking staff to develop some sort of a, a big picture there?
We're working actually with our legislators.
A pro forma analysis to show people?
That's something I'm going to need to have to do, and I don't know enough, we've met a lot with Wakefield, I know some of the options, you know, broadly, at the last time we met, Wakefield wanted Reading to handle all the finances and then just tell them how much to pay. Of course, that's fine with me, here, give us a lot.
Right.
They wanted Reading to do whatever the financial portion was and then just give them a bill.
Perfect.
I think we need a step-by-step guide as to what would happen, at what point would the sale happen, would that happen in tandem with an RFP for the property?
I agree with you, and I think we're still too far away from it.
Far, far away.
To be too specific.
Does it make, I mean, obviously we have to replace the Andrew position, does it make sense to reposition the position as someone who could be-
Just check in to see what repositioned-
Reposition the position.
Doctor Howard, doctor fine, doctor Howard.
Yeah.
The medicine doctor.
So that, you know, so that that position becomes sort of the lead person on that as a project manager, because this is, there's a lot of-
You've been tapping my phone.
There's a lot of moving parts to that, and, you know, obviously Gene and Julie, they're great, you know, but they're, they're torn in different directions.
This is a full-time job in itself.
I mean, when I now think of economic development from where Andrew left us, this is what it is, it's this project.
Right, and so that we are-
So I agree with you.
It's a project manager.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more, and that is definitely what is on our minds.
Right, that's a different, that's a different skill set.
Yes.
Well, somewhat, somewhat intersecting, but not-
The execution of it.
Less sales.
Yeah.
Bob, I've gotten a couple of questions from email on the cell tower, you mentioned an update, can you say a few words?
Just in terms of, I want to bring it back in front of the board, I missed that meeting, that selectmen's meeting, I saw it later on TV. You know, I'll have the town engineer write you an update, but there may be options to put all four carriers back on the water tower.
Oh.
Then that's a new development-
A new water tower.
Three months, a single water tower and not have a-
A new design.
Water tower.
A separate tank and not a separate structure.
Whether that's better or worse than the alternative, it wasn't an alternative in the past. There's, as I understand it, there's two good locations and two less good locations that would be, which will cause price differences in the bidding, but they're still sort of working out the theory of that to see that there's really four acceptable positions, because as a reminder, we have three vendors on the tower and tank now, and there's a fourth one that desperately wants in.
Although, does it give us room if there's a fifth or a sixth that-
No, it wouldn't.
The tower would.
A tower would, so basically we'd be capping our capacity-
Yes, we would.
And revenue, if we did that, but, okay.
Yep.
Just so you know, Bob, I, when there was foliage, Jeff, I took, went around that block and took pictures of the siding.
Okay.
You won't be able to see that tower in the summer while the leaves are up, you will see it from some vantage points in the winter when the leaves are down.
You're talking about a second tower?
Second tower, no, the tower on top of-
Instead of a tank.
Oh, I see it all the time from Killam, from down at the-
You'd see one structure or two structures.
Two structures.
Yeah, which is, of course, we've, you know, we heard vociferously about a second structure.
Yeah, you know, there's a, there's an argument to be made, plus and minus for each situation, you're indecisive.
Well, before, I mean, now there's two, I mean, before there was only one option that was presented.
To get four vendors, correct.
Right, so this is good, there's a second one we can delegate on.
Is, is-
And just to be clear, we are now going down the path of a tank that does not need to be painted every 15 years.
Fiberglass?
So it's more expensive, yeah. It's a cold-bolt blue, unless you want to pay more for a different color or stripe-
We could be Stonem.
Or logo, yeah.
We need to speak to the issue that was raised about, you know, relocating the infrastructure on telephone poles, I think that sounds like a very costly alternative, that the carriers would have to sign up to, can we at least get 10,000-foot analysis to put that to the-
The night where you had your discussion, there was a fellow in the audience that-
Right, he's an attorney on Beacon Street.
No, 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 this is a person that the staff has hired.
Oh, okay.
He didn't say very much that night, but he can definitely speak to this and will come to when it's on your agenda.
And Ryan isn't, Ryan is running with it?
Yeah, just to summarize, he said that is a real threat 20 years away, it's not a threat for the next 20 years.
What's a threat?
Dissipating the cell coverage.
Oh, it's not, uh-
He said, in Reading, no way, it's not going to happen.
No way, I don't understand what he's saying, finances or?
They, they want to have one physical location where a repair person can fix one thing, they don't want to have, you know, 500 telephone-
That's what we need to hear, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, plus you've got to relocate.
That works in a denser urban environment, maybe, it does not work in a suburban-
Is there any, you know, I mean, are we going to hear anything from ultimately the people who are the tenants as to what's going to happen with the service itself, which is frankly not very good?
Yeah, they were there that night, no, some of the service is horrible and-
I can't get in my house.
Our public safety department is not happy that there's, there's gaps of coverage in this town, which is not a good thing.
And they really are significant, too.
Yeah.
So would the proposal be to make this higher so that it gets more open, is that-
Well, they, they need to come at us with the engineering about what they need for better coverage.
When will, when's the right time to talk about the concept? When would it be in the calendar to talk about?
We're going to, we have a staff meeting planned in early April, so after that.
Because one of the options was, and I know this wasn't, didn't get a lot of interest, but is there a way to mount the radio portion above the water portion and still preserve the security of both? Is, you know, building two things that are tall isn't their way to stack them and get them?
You know-
Don't need to answer it, but-
Well, the answer is you can pretty much do anything you can imagine, I don't know that you'd need that unless you're building out space for five and six in the future.
That's, that's the thought.
Yeah.
That gives you the option to expand.
Yeah, in which case you're going to get pretty high, right, but-
Probably another 60, but it's on top of a thing that's already tall and you don't pick it up.
Yep.
All right.
So I'll, I'll put some of these on your agenda, maybe even in March, so you have some space, that's all, thanks.
All right, thank you, this now brings us to the last item of the formal agenda item J, the RMLD payments. Bob, you have a slide?
I have a little-
Oh, please, go ahead.
Yeah, let me set this up a little history on the CAB and the RMLD, as part of the 20-year agreement originally entered into in 1990, the Citizens Advisory Board was formed, which is, consists of members from the four RMLD service towns, appointed by their boards of selectmen to advise the RMLD on financial and other issues, it was part of the grand bargain that caused Wilmington to stop talking about seceding from the RMLD. At that point also, illu payment, tax payments were created for each of the four towns, albeit at the lower level than what Reading gets. And on February 12th, 1998, the CAB voted to establish what's called the Payment, the Town of Reading Subcommittee, I have the minutes here from that, all the players that are named here are long gone, the committee was, consists of two members from the Board of Commissioners, the RMLD Commissioners, two members from the CAB and one member from the Town of Reading, which is myself for direction of the board. And in that discussion, they did approve it unanimously, one of the provisions that was added was that if an impasse arrived at in the negotiations, that there would be a ratepayer compensated facilitator brought in to, to help the, the deal come.
And the date of that agreement is 1998.
That is 1998, and I have that here. Fast forward to May 1st, 2007, annual town meeting, instructional motion was presented, originally by Bill Brown.
Seventeen, Dan, 2017.
Sorry, 17, yes, third night of town meeting. In light of the town's difficult financial situation, to study the Reading Municipal Light Department with an objective of increasing annual revenues to the Town of Reading, and included this phrase, including the possibility of a sale in the longer term, that last phrase is amended up on, after some other discussion and motions failed by Mr. Peter Brown, to just leave the first part of that. That was ultimately passed by town meeting, and that was the genesis for calling the CAB together with the RMLD on that committee. Immediately after town meeting, I endeavored to contact Chairman Pacino to set up a meeting as soon as possible, this kind of went back and forth through the late spring, through the summer, finally, we had a meeting in September.
Through no lack of effort on your part.
I tried, I had other intermediaries urging, urging Mr. Pacino. We did have that one meeting and then went dormant again until today, just, we had our second meeting in 10 months, today. We did make some progress.
Second meeting in 10 months.
10 months. And in the meantime, nothing had, no offers had been forthcoming from the RMLD or the CAB until today, when actually the two members, not the full RMLD board, made a proposal. And that proposal was that return on investment to the Town of Reading would continue to be adjusted upward each year by the higher of the Boston, Brockton, Nashua CPI or 2%. In other words, that would be the floor, 2%, if the CPI were higher, it would prevail in a given year.
So in other words, not to keep up with prop 2.5?
Correct.
Okay.
They also made a request to change their year-end to a calendar year, it's costing them money to do it on the basis of the town's fiscal year.
They seem to have a lot of money, so it would seem to be a problem.
And then there's some discussion about solar project, my counterproposal was to My counterproposal was to change the 2% to 5%. And I further stated that I, as one selectman, was willing to sponsor an amendment to study and effectuate the sale of the RMLD and place it on the spring town meeting warrant.
What was the reaction to that?
Jaws were dropping all around the room. But I, I stress that I don't really want to do that. What I want to get to is, is a combination on this number that's more suitable for the town.
But the original instructional motion comprehended any and all outcomes?
It did. It indeed did.
I was just curious, I mean, you, on, you know, on your own...
Yeah.
Gave a 5% proposal, there was no discussion here amongst...
As duly designated representative, and I'll bring it back to you.
Was there a reaction to the 5%?
They saw what I was trying to do, I think.
Did they respond? Did they counterpropose?
No. Phil's gonna bring it back to his board next week. They will kick it around. I don't know if I should be at that meeting or not, I'm open either way.
Well, if it's an open meeting.
Yeah.
Is it their full board?
It'll be the full board meeting on the 20th...
Yeah, 22nd.
2nd, yeah.
Do you know if the board had voted on the proposal, the initial proposal he'd made?
No, he said it was just he and Stumpbeck that came up with it.
So it's not, it's not a make motion of the board?
Right, so they have to still formally approve that. So that's not even a...
So this is, this is a, what this is, is a trial balloon.
It's a proposal.
They gave you a trial balloon that did not have, to your point, Barry, I mean, their board didn't, you know, approve a, you know, an offer. This is, you know, unfortunately, this is the kind of dialogue, in my opinion, that should have been going on for the last 10 months. And the fact that, you know, I believe that there hasn't been good faith action towards a resolution of this.
I agree. I think that, I think that if both parties are motivated to do something, you can get, you can get projects like this, efforts like this, don't take a long time.
This is not hard.
No, it's not hard.
Correct.
You have two months before town meeting. In fact, if this, if this happened the next two weeks, no warrant article need go on, quite frankly.
Well, I'm, I personally, I'm quite unsatisfied with both the progress as well as the tenor of both these meetings. There's a certain lack of energy and urgency. And it strikes me that you're in the middle of a negotiation.
Yes.
In an environment where we own the asset.
Yes.
So, I don't even understand what that means. And we've all have read the balance sheet. It's like arguing with yourself. We've all read the balance sheet and the income statement. The organization is fairly flush with unrestricted cash and has even more restricted cash. And they add to that on a regular basis by several million dollars a year. So, we appreciate...
They presented the document tonight to make, make things look even worse, and they may. The statement was made that the prior Vin Cameron, who ran the RMLD, let the physical plant go to hell. And they're, they're fixing it now.
That's many moons ago.
Yes.
I think that's, you know, that's already baked in the pie.
So there's more capital that is needed.
Dan, do we, um, before we...
Hang on, Barry. Where I want to go with this is I do want to ask Ray to comment on what would be needed in a warrant article to facilitate the sale of RMLD, not to actuate.
Not to vote on a sale.
Not to vote on it, but rather to understand, so we speak from authority and speak from due process.
Okay.
What would be required. And the reason is, I don't think this progress gets any better unless there is a genuine realization that sale is a potential outcome. Now, you may view that, this, I'm, I'm not negotiating with something I own. I'm just not gonna do that. We have taxpayers who are asking for $4 million out of their pockets.
We're hurting.
And I've got...
But you're not gonna sell a valuable asset that you cannot recreate without any, some type of any kind of a public discourse on it.
We're not even talking about selling it, Barry.
I know, but you're putting it out there.
Nobody said that, Barry. I agree with you. There's a whole lot of process and a whole lot of wickets ahead.
Bob, what are people gonna see tomorrow in your article? Sale of RMLD, right?
No.
That's what they're gonna hear.
No.
So...
No, there's an instructional, I'm sorry, I'm gonna argue with you.
Okay.
Instructional motion anticipates that a sale is a potential outcome. We were, are derelict in not having analyzed what that means. That's all I'm trying to do, is what does that mean?
A number of proposers had that in mind when they made the original motion.
I'm not suggesting we do it, but if we don't know what it entails, we certainly can't comprehend what doing it will mean.
And I'm clear-eyed about what that could mean. I'm reading something from 1990, "The Reading must authorize RMLD sale by a 2/3s vote at two town meetings, and it may have to go to the voters. There are issues with the existing power contracts, whether or not Reading would be liable to pay them."
Do you know, Bob, who's liable on the power contracts? Is that on our books or their books?
We're looking at them, we asked them.
Do you know?
Yeah, I haven't seen their language, but in general, we're liable for RMLD.
So we're holding the liability, and we're not...
So is anybody, Dan, in your research, there's 30, 40 municipal light departments, all of them have some type of a agreement with their host community?
They may or may not.
Have we researched, you know, what is, you know, what's a typical, you know, dividend per kilowatt hour, dividend per net operating income? Because, you know, you came up with 5%, seems reasonable to me.
Yep.
They're at 2%. You know, should we be at 7%? Is 2% like better than most?
Well, the CPI has been as high as 4, like 15 years ago, my voice.
But if you look at the rate of growth, the cumulative rate of growth, it's, it's not even staying up with Prop. 2.5.
That's correct.
And I do believe that as an asset we own that's generating cash, we are, it's our asset. This is essentially a dividend-paying, stock can't get the dividends out of it, it's your money.
You're getting a dividend out of it, you're just not getting as high dividends as you'd like.
Well, it's ours, and I, and I'm not going...
Well, if it sells, it's not ours, so it's like, I mean, I just think that was way putting the cart way, way before the horse.
Okay. Well, I'm in, I'm in a very different place. I'm so tired of hearing that our schools need money and our towns need money, when I've got effectively a revenue net, a revenue generator and a profits generator over an Ash Street. All we're asking for is a better deal.
Right.
We're getting insufficient communication, and what I'll call is insincere communication. And if the instructional motion comprehends the potential for sale...
What does an instructional motion say, John?
Read it again, please.
Because I think it's pretty clear that up to and including anything.
No, that was amended out, actually. It struck, I'll read the original one.
How the amendment failed?
It struck the Board of Selectmen in light of the town's difficult financial situation to study the Reading Municipal Light Department with an objective increasing annual revenues to the Town of Reading stop. It went on, and this was amended out, including the possible, possibility of a sale in the longer term.
Was it amended out?
That was amended out, I said that.
But it doesn't restrict it?
Well, it was amended out.
Okay, but we're not, we're not restricted only to that language. Go ahead, Bob.
My understanding, and I remember he's not, certainly...
Yeah, it's analogy, don't worry.
Was that all the instructional motions did not pass because one of the RMLD Commissioners stood up and offered this alternative path.
Well, this alternate path isn't yielding.
I understand that, so, you know, everything that was discussed is fine, it was discussed, but town meeting didn't actually vote on something. They accepted RMLD's word.
Right.
That this process was satisfactory.
It ain't working.
Yep.
That's what I'm saying, so...
So if this is saber rattling, I get it.
Yeah.
You know, I think it's, I think it's unproductive, but, well, this is my, I think you can get to a better deal without that, but...
I don't, I'm gonna take exception to the comments. It's not saber rattling. I don't, I don't say so.
You're not gonna sell it, but you're gonna threaten to sell it.
No, I never said, Barry, I'm sorry, I'm not saying I'm gonna sell it. What I'm gonna say is, we have an asset. We don't know what the process is, we don't know the valuation of it, we don't know what the, the entities that might be interested in it. We're dealing from a position of ignorance. All I want to do is get smart.
That's fine.
And there's, there's no action there, it's just a process of getting educated. We know very little about this, it's not an area that we've delved into. Where we are, I am totally unsatisfied with. We are not getting...
I agree, I think that there's just a different way of going about it.
Well, you know, we tried, we tried it for six months and nine months, it isn't working.
You have a question?
Yes.
Vanessa, over our finance committee, would it be possible to invite RMLD, Dan, and Comptess Financial Manager, and the Board of Selectmen to have a joint meeting?
Sure.
To further understand it prior to setting the instructional motion forward?
The instructional motion in question was set aside, there is no instructional motion.
No, no, there is one, but with the clause taken out, that was voted.
But I understood that, that the chairman stood up, and there was no vote taken on that, is that accurate?
No, that's not true. They tried that, and they tried to withdraw it, and it was not allowed, because unanimous consent.
Did a version pass at the very end there?
Yeah.
Something to fall off?
Instructional motion carried and amended.
There is an instructional motion.
Already.
I'm sorry if I wasn't clear, that passed.
Okay.
With the sale clause amended out.
Okay, gotcha.
My, my, my request is, is related to, but not in conflict with the instructional motion. I would like to understand the process, the valuation, the potential timeline for a sale, just to educate ourselves.
In response to Vanessa's suggestion, I would suggest you all get posted and attend the meeting that RMLD is having on the 22nd.
Could do that.
That's when this will be on the agenda. You know, I think it's best stopped there. Let's just say that the warrant closes on the 27th, this is selectmen anticipate any action, the 22nd has to be the date for a resolution.
Should we be posted also?
Yeah.
Yeah, we will. But the principle is, I expect that we get a better progress and better results than one and a half meetings over seven months.
Yep.
That just is bad faith.
And clearly, the reason that there was an amendment out of that last language was that the chairman of the RMLD stood up and said, "We can certainly work this out another way." He said what you were saying.
He did.
However, eight months later...
Yep.
We get, we get a scrap of paper that says, that is nothing coming from their board, it's, you know, and it, what appears to me to be a, you know, a rather disingenuous approach to aggressively solving the problem, or expanding the discussion about a new agreement. I personally think that a new agreement is called for.
I agree. It's what we wanted all along.
Right. Bob?
Yeah, and just to be clear, and I think you know this, but, you know, Dan has tried very hard to get meetings for the last nine months.
Clearly.
So, you know, I don't want to ascribe any intention of not meeting, but they just haven't met that part of the bargain.
Nope.
They promised to meet, they promised to work this out. I believe there was a full understanding around the table tonight that this is not rocket science.
Yeah.
That this is just a simple thing that should have been hammered out easily.
Well, and the other thing to John's point is, there was a commitment made in public meeting, and you're as good as your word.
Right.
And we've tried, the other side has not been responsive. And I think it's incumbent upon us to at least know, we're talking about when we're asked, if you went to the final point, how would you do it? What would it take? How long would it take? Et cetera, et cetera. We haven't done any of that work, and I feel naked not knowing.
Well, we did it in 1990.
Can I ask this to the chairman? Dan, did you offer, did you offer another meeting before we closed the warrant?
They were planning...
You tried.
They couldn't do it till March 9th, I think, that's our next meeting.
So, okay, let me understand.
Of the Subcommittee.
Right. You know, today's the 13th.
Right.
Yet again, they were unable to get together with you, four people, between now and the 27th? So that offer was made and rejected?
They weren't available.
Are we dealing with the President of the United States here? I mean...
That's what I mean, there's a certain lack of sincerity, and I, I think it's incumbent upon us to say, "Look, guys, you belong to us. If we do, if we did want to move ahead, I know it's costly, I know it's time-consuming, but here's the process we'll use." Yes?
Does RMLD have regular meetings scheduled?
Yeah.
Yes, they do, they have their own elected commissioners.
Thursday, I have a remo.
Is there a reason why members of the Board of Directors haven't attended the regularly scheduled meetings in order to discuss this?
This wouldn't necessarily be an open session, this would be a discussion.
It wasn't the agreed-upon plan either. The agreed-upon plan was that there was a, and it's actually written into the, it's either, I don't know that it's a bylaw... It's in a prior RMLD town agreement. Yes, it's in an agreement that clearly lays out exactly how this negotiation should go on and who should be involved in it. And we picked that up and have tried now for over eight months to execute against the agreement that has been in place for...
Since 19...
I was gonna say 30 years, as I remember it.
There's nothing that obviates us from being able to go to their meeting as, you know, and just, just as people came in here and public comment and asked us to look at something...
I think that's fair, but we, we did, I mean, we have a person assigned to this process that is detailed by agreement, and I agree, we can go to their meeting and we can have a public comment, and that's fine, but, you know, I do think we have to follow the prescribed, you know, approach.
And I repeatedly asked Mr. Pacino if the RMLD was gonna take this issue up in any specific future meeting. What he did the first, after our first meeting, is to give the same financial report to the meeting, but not elicit any discussion on this issue. He said, "We're not gonna talk about it tonight, Dan."
There's a certain lack of sincerity and a certain lack of urgency.
There is a Board of Directors of the RMLD, we can certainly...
Yeah, we're talking to them.
Write to the, or communicate with them our displeasure on this, and that becomes part of the public record with RMLD.
All of those steps should be, all of that should be done, I agree, but what would be the process to get, to get informed about the legal mechanism by which we would?
I think that you as a board, as many as possible, should attend on the 22nd.
Right.
See what discussion happens, that may solve the whole issue that night.
I like the idea of being posted.
Is this, is this February 22nd?
Yeah.
Yep. Down with the headquarters.
Right, before your closing of the warrant.
Bob, can I just be posted, come to that as well, please?
Yeah, I will, yep.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Bob, I did forward those two documents to Ray. You can work with him to review them, they're, they're old, they need to be updated.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would, I would suggest, based on your analysis, that we be prepared on the 27th to do one thing or the other. I think we should be prepared to place a warrant. And, you know, I mean, and that's not, that doesn't call for a vote, I'm just suggesting that I'd love to see everything get worked out beautifully on the 22nd or before the 27th, as a result of their next full meeting, that would be wonderful. If not...
Over the 27th, then we can decide.
If not, then, you know, based on, you know, what you've suggested, I, I think we should be, I would, I would ask you to be prepared for that.
Yeah, I, I'm tired of waiting, and the voters expect more. We're going after them for $4 million, and I fully expect to be pummeled, asking, "Why in the world aren't you looking at a renegotiation of the agreement? Why aren't you looking at a way to get some additional dollars out of an asset you own? Why in the world is the cash signals in an asset that we can't pull it out of? And why isn't it benefiting the schoolchildren and the teachers and the taxpayers of the town?"
To be clear, Mr. Chair, we did receive $2.3 million dividend.
2.4.
Oh, I stand corrected, so...
No, you're sit-revosed. The hours later.
Right.
Repurposed. So, I mean, you know, to make it, you know, your, your comments are well-taken, Mr. Chair, but, you know, you make it sound like we've been getting nothing. We get $2.4 million, can we get a better deal? Absolutely. Do we deserve a better deal? Absolutely. And I think we should take the steps to do it, and I just think that...
We're actually getting more than that when you include the pilot and you include the service expense to revenues. We're getting a number that's much higher.
Plus there's another 240K we get with the other four towns.
And also the expense that they reimburse us toward.
My point is that the agreement is not reasonable, given the index used and given Prop. 2.5 realities. And I feel differently if the organization was, was cash poor, they're not cash poor. They're, it's a very profitable enterprise, and it's time to renegotiate the agreement or find a way to, to rev, to monetize the asset. Bob?
I want to make sure I understand what it is that, I mean, Ray will be here, so you can ask him questions on the fly, but I'll ask him to prepare some kind of generic language to begin the investigation of a sale, and I'll just leave it at that for tonight.
That's another...
And actually, I'd like to kind of know...
Learn some of the things we don't know.
I'd like to know how many municipal utilities have actually sold.
I have the answers. One. Need them? It was a while ago.
How long?
1900.
All right, so clearly...
Not, not too many recently.
And when was the last time a municipal light company was established?
Yeah, that's also 100 years ago.
So they're not making any more of them, those who have them aren't selling them.
There's a reason for that.
Right, so, I'm just, I'm just putting it in the, you want information, I want that information.
That's fine, but that, the suggestion is it's not possible. I'm not convinced it's not possible, because I'm ignorant, we all are, that's one of the reasons.
D P U has been lobbied to make it very difficult.
Well, I'm a little surprised that you wouldn't, would not welcome the idea of bringing this group to the table, our asset to the table, when they have been relatively unwilling to do so. If this is the way we do it, then maybe that's the way we do it.
Nothing in my comments suggested that I'd want to bring them to a, a large table, so, you know.
Okay. So that's, that's the request, Bob, so Ray's busy, I know, this'll take some time.
Yeah, that's fine.
Did you want to throw the chart up on the table, it's in the panel?
Is it in the packet?
It is, it's page, um...
Yep.
You may have a different packet.
It's right after the...
Page 1, 94?
Say again?
94.
Policies, yep. After the policies.
It's 94 out of 139, is that the same book you have?
I see what you're saying.
Sorry, yeah, 94.
Aren't you in 94?
94 on the top.
Right.
Always put the blooming number on.
All right, now I'm here, I'm sick. Can you make that a little bit?
Can you blow that up a bit?
So the, the rate change...
What happened?
The rate change in the RMLD earnings distribution over the last four years is The rate change in the R M L D earnings distribution over the last four years is 1.5%, including the pilot payment and lieu of taxes and the operating budget support or the work our accounting group does, are even lower. So, this is unsustainable and it's unacceptable, and it's, it's not even a discussion in my book. We've got to find a way to get a better agreement that at least matches the realities of the world we're living in. And if you get 200 or 250 million for it, and you turn that into a time value of money, that's another, take 4% of that, you could do that forever. Tom, and 4% of 250 million would be okay. All right.
Anybody ever have N Star? National Grid?
Yeah, they just fixed the gas pipes out here multiple times, they did a pretty good job. As far as I know, all the neighbors are pretty happy.
I think you jump into a lot of.
Nobody wants to take that.
In an inappropriate way. I mean, this is a, you know, this is an effort to get information, and it's an effort.
We're all going to be there on the 22nd.
We are, we are.
So let's just, let's just leave it at that.
All right. The only other topics tonight are the approval of the minutes, so we'll go to the movement of November 7th.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, move to approve the minutes of November 7th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Page 4. I think Bob said something about, it should be E R R, I don't have the place on the minutes. I think he had A I R, it should be E R R. Page 4 of the, oh, it's 1114, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
7th is fine.
7th, oh.
7th is good.
Okay.
Can't read my chicken scratches here.
I don't think I had any changes here, so we have a, do we have a second, I'm sorry?
Yes, you have a second.
Okay.